I was like, well, there's, there's the one.
Yeah, because I showed me your calendar that you were pretty much out of hiatus.
So we had to, uh, Houston this weekend instead of St. Paul and, uh, other.
Oh, he's.
Yeah, we're not sure you know.
Oh, yeah, well, no, yeah, I, I understand, I understand.
I did a little snooping.
I've never driven a fifth wheel in several years like this.
A little snooping. There's no data.
Yeah.
The microphone is there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Do you want me to start?
There you go.
Okay. All right.
All right, it's fine.
Let me know when you're ready, Deborah.
We're good.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 5:30. Uh, we'll start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
I'll carry her, District Two.
David Mers for District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. We are all present and accounted for. Uh, if you will stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation. Begin with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the heat of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And we have Pastor David Simonson from Casterville Community Church.
Would you please favor with me? My gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to peacefully gather tonight and conduct the business of our community. Thank you for our elected representatives who serve selflessly on behalf of our common cause. We ask that they be guided by your wisdom and grace. Please grant them understanding so that they would see the problems clearly and may with sober judgment come to just and charitable solutions. On behalf of our citizens gathered tonight, I pray that we might contribute meaningfully to the conversation and help our leaders understand our needs. I pray that in faith to you, we would respect the decisions of our leaders and grant them the honor to their service. I pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, your son, my Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, man. All right, uh, next item is citizens' comments. Somebody, uh, reminded me to remind you that for citizens' comments, you are welcome to speak. Uh, please state your name and your address for the record. Uh, limit comments to three minutes and understand that, uh, if it is not on the agenda, we cannot respond to it. Um, so I just want to make sure if some people come and make comments and they wait for answers and we can't get them. So, uh, if you would like to stand for citizens' comments. Anybody? Uh, if you come up to the podium. And again, state your, uh, name and your address for the record.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Carlos Gutierrez. Uh, we are property owners, uh, right here off of Highway 90. And my only, uh, comment or question today would be for the, uh, airport zoning regulations. As far as, uh, the board, uh, members, um, we, I think we needed to address whether Lacoste was going to be involved. And I think just that, that just needs to be a discussion because there is a, uh, significant, uh, significant amount of property that gets affected by that. That's all I have.
Okay, and we will be talking about that during.
Okay.
I'm sorry, your last name again, I can get.
Gutierrez. Gutierrez.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, well, if you want to make comments, we will have, uh, a discussion about the, uh, the solar rates a little bit later in the meeting. All right, anybody else? Great. Next item, we have, uh, the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for September 12th, 2023, regular call city council meeting. We have approved budget amendment ordinance and we have, uh, approval of the resolution for police department, Uvalde-Stone Garden project ramp. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. And second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next item is the city administrator report. We have Scott Dixon.
Oh, great. Uh, so you have the, you have the, uh, hard copies in front of you. And the Q and A. I'm getting, I'm getting chatter. You have the, the hard copy in front of you? Yeah, well, I didn't. I have an excellent staff and someone on my staff fixed it and now it's, it's right. So, yeah. Uh, it, it used to say, oh, wait, well. Right, that's what you're saying. That's what I was going to say. So they are remarking on the fact that District Three used to say district and now it says district. So, small things, small pleasures in life. You have a, a report in front of you, um, that I, that's fresh, hot off the presses, we sent out this afternoon. So I recognize that you may not have had a chance to review it. I apologize for the short notice. There's not a lot in it that I want to elaborate on, uh, unless you would like me to, I'm happy to. But, um, I wanted to, uh, talk about National Night Out and just let you know kind of what, who's coming and what the plans are. So I'm going to, this was not in the report, it's mentioned in the report, but I didn't have this level of detail. So I want to let you know. So this is their list of the folks that are actually participating. Participating, goodness. Uh, Blue Bonnet, um, the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts, uh, the Fire Department, um, a candy vendor, uh, A and G Treats, Homeland Security Helicopter, Border Patrol bringing a scope. Jukes, uh, they're cooking pulled pork. Car Show, uh, Linda Wilson's doing that. North Park Chevy is bringing a couple of vehicles and setting up a booth. We have, we're going to have Porta, Porta Coolers and Porta Potties, uh, both out there. Uh, we will have, uh, Southern Creek Boutique will be out there, The House of Funky Chunky, uh, they've, they've been out there every year I've been here. Uh, Broadway Bank, uh, TR, The Ranch Nutrition, Ruby Cantu, uh, Cashville State Bank, uh, they're going to be handing out water. San Antonio Council on Alcohol and Drug Awareness will be out there, Council for Dental, and then Kettle Corn. So all this is a National Night Out participation. This is next Tuesday at the airport, next Tuesday evening. Um, encourage people to show up. Should be, I mean, we've had pretty good turnout for the last several years and hopefully we'll have great weather. Actually, hopefully it'll be raining cats and dogs and we have to postpone. That's, that would, that would be a wonderful outcome, honestly, uh, even though we'd hate to have to reschedule. But, um, yeah, that's National Night Out. Is there anything else on my report that you'd like me to elaborate on?
I'm not jumping out of an airplane this year.
What's that?
I'm not jumping out of an airplane this year.
No, and the mayor's, mayor and his mother, neither one are jumping out of an airplane, right? Or is she?
No.
Okay, she didn't call you chicken and just decide to do it on her own? Okay.
She told me I was chicken.
All right.
I said, maybe next year, sorry, go ahead.
I had a question relative to the Tech dot thoroughfare planning.
Yes.
Um, the last time that issue was brought to council, there was a rare note in Discord.
Yes.
That discussion. So I was curious which direction those conversations and meetings have been going and what sort of direction we're pushing for.
Well, the guidance that staff was given was to continue to work with all parties to try and achieve favorable outcomes. That's, that's, that's basically was the outcome of the council discussion. Because as you recall, there was a couple of resolutions, one for, one against, neither one was voted for, it was tabled. I would say in general it's positive. There is a planning effort, um, that's being undertaken both by the county and by Tech Dot, um, to look at thoroughfare planning for the entire county. And it is a pretty, you know, we don't know the details of it, no one does, it's in the planning phases. Um, but, um, I see those as positive signs, that the fact that both of them are working on it and that they're seeking our input. Uh, there have been other issues related to R cuts and the design of the Super Street on 90 and how that gets put in. And, um, the most recent, you know, up to date thing is that the, that the Tech Dot's going to look at a prorated way of doing that, which I think that's also a positive outcome. Yeah, I, in general, we know, as far as, uh, meetings, uh, the mayor and I are working with him, see, to set up a meeting with Lance Simmons, who is the executive engineer, the top dog at, at Tech Dot. Um, and so he could, looks like he'll be coming and visiting us sometime in November. We'd originally thought it'd be in October, it looks like it's going to be November. Um, that will be a kind of invite-only luncheon for stakeholders with Lance where we will talk about their planning, about these various issues and priorities that the city has. The county will be there. So I think, all in all, it's, I mean, we've got a lot of folks who care a lot about Casterville and, and not becoming, you know, San Antonio and some of the other things that we think, uh, poor transportation planning would lead to. So, I don't know if that answered your question, being somewhat diplomatic.
Well, I mean, honestly, Tech Dot is going to do what they're going to do. I personally hate the idea of having a 10-lane, I'm going to say that again, 10 lanes, uh, from Victory Lane all the way basically up to Long. I think that's absolutely nuts, but they have the ability to do that. We have the ability to have minor influence, but they decide what they're going to decide. It's very frustrating. But they have been in open communication, so.
They're still taking our calls and they're still listening to us and they still ask us our opinions and that's, that's, those are all positive things. Any other questions about the report?
Uh, just, uh, regarding the EDC Board Liaison Assignment, I'll put out there that if the mayor or Herb Dyer need assistance with joint, JBSA or VA, let me know.
Yes.
And one of those, Herb may be finding out about it right now, because I have not had the time to tell him, hey, by the way, the EDC meeting is. So we'll see if he's able to serve in that capacity, but, um, yeah.
So we voluntold him, but you do have veto.
Yeah, you do have veto at the word.
She and I will work on it.
Love it. That's what you get for missing meetings.
Yeah.
You get all the deliverables. Okay, any other questions?
All right, thank you all.
Very full, thank you. Uh, next item is a proclamation declaring October 5th, 2023 as World Teacher Day. Uh, and this came to me, um, by the, um, it was the Teachers Association, this is really advocating for our, our educators. And so let me read the proclamation. So the proclamation is, whereas Casterville, excuse me, Casterville's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. And whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. And whereas our Casterville Medina Valley ISD teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported, supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teachers profession and honoring the, honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Casterville City Council joins Teachers Can and its partnering entities across Texas, uh, in celebrating World Teachers Day and proclaims October 5th, 2023 to be Casterville Medina Valley ISD Teachers Day. And be it further resolved that the city of Ca- Casterville, the Casterville City Council encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October 5th as a symbol of support for our educators. That is read and signed this 26th day of September, 2023. And this is a serious matter. I mean, our kids are our future and, uh, we have a responsibility to support the people that are doing that. I have multiple family members that are teachers and it's, it's a more thankless job than ours is up here. It's, uh, they, they have a lot of responsibility, they have a lot of, uh, challenges and, um, and they are, um, it is not highly compensated commensurate to the impact that they can have on our kids. So, thank you. Uh, the next item is a public hearing on a final plat for the Alsatian Oaks Lot 4, Block 1, approximately 1.382 acres located immediately north of Highway 90 East and east of Tonder Drive. We're going to open the public hearing at 5:44. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this? Do you want to just introduce this, Scott?
Sure, so this is just part of our process for, uh, recordation of plats. They have, uh, they submitted an original kind of master plan plot, a PUD, a planned unit development of their development. Included some commercial lots, uh, that are on, um, alongside Highway 90 and that's where these are. Uh, I know one of the questions received prior to the meeting was, you know, is this any different? Is it, is there anything changed, et cetera? Uh, it is in line with everything they've submitted, so this was expected. This is just part of that process to record the plat. So during a public hearing, uh, you know, we, we invite comments, uh, to, on, on these types of things. And then the next, I believe the next act, action item is to actually accept or approve the, the submitted plat.
Great, uh, any comments, questions? All right, we'll close the. Oh, please.
So, since the, uh, I guess airport zoning has not been said yet, uh, even these plots, the density would be in line with what's going to be coming down airport zoning.
Uh, the agreement on this one was signed, uh, before that, I believe. I'll, I'll defer to the attorney on this, but I believe that that one, uh, being that this was signed, uh, years ago. And that was what kind of instigated this, is the fact that this should have been done before that agreement was done. Uh, and so that's one of the reasons that we're doing this. I think that it will, based on what I've seen, it'll, it will be very little non-conforming in that area because it's primarily commercial in that front area, but we'll, we'll see that in the, uh, discussion. Does that answer the question? Okay.
Can I have his name because he's speaking?
I'm sorry, can you please state your name and, uh, address for the record, please?
Yes, Kenneth Lang, Fort Myers, Sierra, Colorado, Texas.
Lang, L-A-N?
L-A-N-G-E.
Great, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing at 5:46. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on a final, uh, plat for the Alsatian Oaks Lot 4, Block 1, approx- approximately 1.382 acres located immediately north of Highway 90 East and east of Tonder Drive. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sound moved.
Second.
Great, any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um, all right, the next item, are we leaving this one on? Did you hear from Dr. Kalos?
Uh, I would like to run up there too.
Okay, let me go ahead and introduce the item. So, um, so we won't be taking action, uh, consider and take appropriate action on a resolution nominating a representative to the Medina County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right, so the very latest, um, they, uh, so first off, just for clarity, um, the city had, the, the, there are votes required for nomination to the board. Uh, each jurisdiction is based on population, um, provided a certain number of votes. We share a representative with the school district. Because of the size of the school district, they're, the number of votes they have is, you know, extreme, much larger than ours, right? A lot bigger. Uh, they have, yeah, 20, okay, 27,312, what is that?
They have 1,507.
Oh, 1,507 votes versus.
I'm sorry, that would be, 1,449.
Okay, 1,449.
And we have.
81.
91.
Oh, 98. All right, we're going to figure this out. 98 versus 1,400. Either way, they have a lot more votes than we do. So we generally, the custom and practice has been for the city of Casterville, that the school district chooses a nominee. Sometimes they consult with us, sometimes they don't, but they choose a nominee and then we ratify that, right? They, uh, had their meeting last night, uh, unfortunately, and, and this is coming about because, uh, Tim Hart, who's, uh, served in that role for quite a while, you know, several years, he has announced that he's not going to, uh, be able to run again or be able to be appointed again, because it's not a, it's an appointed position, not an elected position.
We didn't explain that he doesn't get a retire?
Yeah, no, he doesn't get paid either. So, um, and this is the, okay, the appraisal board, this is a, uh, nomination to their board, not to the, the ARB, the Appraisal Review Board that reviews people's objections, that sort of thing. This is, this is their actual board. The board, the responsibilities of board include hiring the chief appraiser, approving the budget, those types of things. They typically only meet, uh, quarterly. That's what their bylaws state. Lately, they've been meeting every other month, they meet, uh, six times a year. In any case, uh, they were unable to appoint someone, uh, la- at last night's meeting, the MVISD, and they are calling a special meeting for October the 11th. So Dr. Kalos and I will be in touch to see who they appoint and, uh, hopefully at our October 14th meeting, we would ratify whoever they appointed on the 11th. That's the plan.
Perfect. All right.
And I do not have a name. I, I don't know who they're, uh, putting forth at this time.
We put out a lot of feelers and. Okay, uh, great. Next item, um, review and discussion on proposed airport zoning regulations. So a couple of things, uh, before we, uh, go into it with our attorney. Um, one, a lot of times I'll move these to the very end of the meeting, just so that you guys have to sit through the same stuff that we have to, but I decided not to this time. You've sat through enough meetings. Um, the other thing is that, uh, there is no action tonight. There will not be action until we work through this completely 100% and, um, we are absolutely sure of the way that we're moving forward. So I don't want, and that's one reason that we're talking about it in city council before appointing boards, before going through any of the other stuff. It is specifically so that we can go through and understand exactly what that is and we can go through that with you, um, so that you understand exactly what that is. There should be no surprises here. So we, it took us a little while to find out what those regulations are. The attorney has some recommendations. We're going to hear the recommendations and just understand you will have plenty of notice before any action is taken, uh, large or small. These are just updates. Okay, so, uh, normally, uh, during an item like this, uh, we, uh, I, I don't have comments, but what I'd like to do is let's have, let's hear everything from the attorney and then if we have some questions after that, uh, then I'll open it up so that you can get clarification, uh, you can, uh, talk about things that concern you and, and we'll work through that. All right? All right, so we have Cynthia Trivino.
There we go. So, uh, Mayor, we continue to work and make progress on, uh, the revisions to the proposed airport hazard and land use compatibility. Um, we had Bryce worked on them, got them over to Brianna and Scott, and we received comments back from, uh, from city staff last Friday. Um, so we've not been able to get, you know, those pieces, uh, worked into the draft so far. And one of the key issues which we discussed at the last meeting was that, uh, we had noted, uh, some concerns that we didn't think that the distance markers on the maps were correct. And so Bryce worked through those things and we determined that the, that the maps had, that had been provided to us did not, indeed did not have the correct distance markers on that. So we will be working with KSA, um, and with Tech Dot to make sure that we get those particular, um, items updated, uh, based on the direction that, that we have now. So I will give you, uh, for instance, um, one of the distance markers, uh, for airport hazard zones, you know, on one end of the airport, when we actually take a look at it, falls entirely within the airport property itself. But on the map that we're, that we have, that distance marker falls outside of, outside of airport property and that's not accurate. So that's a technical issue that we do need to, um, work on and get that resolved. Uh, one of the other things is that, you know, we are, we are pulling back the airport, uh, not the airport hazard zones because those are governed by the FAA, but the land use compatible, compatibility zones. So there are a couple of those, uh, zoning areas that we're still showing the expanded, um, zones that were initially proposed. And so we've got the, the draft language corrected in, in our draft, but we need to make sure that those reduced zoning sizes, you know, get translated over to the map itself. So those were kind of the key issues that we are, um, that we were working with there. And again, um, and I think that the next key issue is that, uh, the clear zone, uh, it, it would appear that the clear zone as initially proposed was much larger than what was required by FAA regulations. So again, you know, we're, we've notated that and we'll be working on, on ensuring that, you know, we meet just, you know, what is actually required by FAA. And my apologies, I don't have all of these pieces memorized, I actually have to go through the notes. Okay, uh, yes, and Brianna did, uh, indicate, you know, that these maps weren't necessarily provided by KSA. Uh, some of them may have come, actually come from Tech Dot. So we just make, need to make sure that everything gets lined up into one map. So with that, we have, you know, all the required regulations in one location and that everything matches up. And then I think the next piece out of all of that is that, uh, there is one area of the airport map that does actually, um, extend beyond airport property and over into neighboring property. Um, and that is the, the area where we are looking at, um, to allow a different form of density in that particular area to accommodate what's already existing. So in, in, I think in that one area, there, there might actually be a couple of residential dwellings out there. So we're working on getting that so that those dwellings would be in compliance with the required density for that particular zone.
Is that A2 or A3?
Eek. Hang on one second. Actually, A1, I believe. Well, you know, he's got the note tied to A1, but I'm not exactly sure if it's A1 or A2. But, uh, A1 actually, yeah.
That A1's the runway.
Okay. Undeveloped rural ag, commercial retail and industrial.
Yeah, but still that's within the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's inside the.
So whichever zone, it, it is that first zone that is actually outside of airport property. But it's my understanding that there are already, you know, some residential structures or there is the potential for residential structures there. So the density needs to be, um, established so that, that property can be used by the property owners, you know, in the event that they want to build a house or have family build a house or those particular types of uses. It will, it will be, uh, you know, of a density that doesn't, uh, that doesn't conflict with FAA regulations. And then I think the only other thing, uh, of, of particular concern that was noted by, uh, by our planner was that, uh, within one of the airport hazards areas, there was the ability to have a, uh, variance for height, you know, within that particular area, which is not compatible with FAA regulations. So we'll be, we'll be working through that and getting, uh, those changes made. And then the rest of those were, were just, uh, some cleanup language, you know, and some recommendations for Brianna, you know, to ensure that, um, terms and definitions within the document are consistent all the way through.
Okay. Yeah, I think that what people are going to be the most interested in is seeing what that overlay looked like. Actually, Scott, will you just bring that up?
That's what I was trying to ask.
It's not a very good map. Um, I can show you the printed map that I have, but it's like impossible to see anything. So, um, that's one of the things that they're working on. Again, we're giving a lot of information very early. We'll work on making it very, very clear where everything is, where everything is proposed to be, um, so.
Does anybody else have it up on there already?
He's coming your way.
He has the flower.
But primarily Mayor Bryce just continues to work through the land use issues and is pushing this forward.
Okay, and so in the printed area, uh, I don't think we, we didn't have extra copies of this, did we? Print it up?
No.
Uh, if you want, uh, I'll give you my copy of it when we're done here, um, in print, but if anybody wants it. Oh, there we go. Uh, if anybody wants it, email, just let Deborah know and she'll email it to you so you can see. Again, it is very unclear. You can see that A1 extends basically, there you go. To the river, A2 just beyond, and A3 beyond that. I think that the only land use compatibility, aside from airport property, are those three, A1, A2, A3, is that correct?
Yes, it, you know, and, and the primary difference between what was originally rolled out and where we're at now is that the regulations for the airport hazard zones are completely different from the land use compatibility zones. And so one of the things that, that we have rectified, you know, in the proposed draft and what we're working towards is because the airport hazard zones primarily exist on airport property, which is the city's property to regulate, period. And, you know, what we're working on is those land use compatibility zones for those, uh, property owners that, that, you know, abut or adjoining or fall within. those property owners that, you know, abut or adjoining, or fall within one of the land use zones.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I did, but you can go first. Please.
Well, I do believe that the, when they talk about the ratios of the conical surfaces, those are relative to the runway. And as land proceeds towards the river, the land is also falling away. So those height restrictions would be different on lower ground...
That's correct.
...than they would be on higher ground. So they wouldn't be as impactful toward the river as they are towards town.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you have a question?
Yes. So the TZ transitional zone, that shares restrictions with whatever is sort of perpendicular to the runway from there, right? Is that my... Is that understanding correct? Sort of?
The transitions on, that's the last one?
T-Z.
Yeah, right there.
My reading of it says that essentially, you know, we have the little trapezoids for A1, A2, A3, but then their boundaries essentially go out sideways up and down into the TZ, because it shares restrictions with whatever's closest?
Right. So the transitional zones, you know, the way that they are designed to be set up, and I don't know how they're showing on the map, but they are actually those zones that are symmetrically located to either side of the runway. So, you know, those would be falling under airport hazard zoning, not the land use zoning.
Okay. When do you anticipate getting a scaled GIS map? All this time?
It's going to be a minute. One, we're working to get the draft ordinance in its final kind of state, where we've got all the comments recognized, et cetera. Then I'm going to have that developed. But I don't think it'll take terribly long to do. I think last time we asked KSA to help us with that effort, it took about two weeks. So 10 days, two weeks to 10 days. But I think, I don't want to start on that until we actually get all this ironed out.
Trouble is, the people that are affected aren't going to really see it until we get a valid scaled map.
Right. And so we aren't going to, but we aren't going to have a public meeting until we have a valid scaled map. So...
Well, we're not going to have, we're not going to have any decisions until we can communicate exactly where it is, exactly who's impacted.
Right.
Make sure that we have the conversation.
And unfortunately, the folks that we depend on to help us, you know, get connected with KSA detoured for tax and budget season for a little bit.
Slackers. Okay. And so, again, just for clarification on here, the blue zones, if you're, if you can see the color, the blue zones are A1, A2, and A3. And then the transition zone, it's marked with TZ, and that is, yeah, right in that area. So those are the only ones with any kind of proposed conforming and non-conforming land use that is not on the airport. So the A1 zone, residential would be unconforming, and conforming would be undeveloped rural agricultural, commercial, retail, or industrial. Zone 2, the non-conforming would be residential density above three dwelling units per acre. So that's 15,000 square foot lots. And then everything else is the undeveloped rural agricultural residential, not exceeding three dwelling units per acre, commercial, retail, and industrial. And then Zone A3, and you probably want to look on the other side, is more appropriate to this group. Yeah?
Well, the other side is appropriate to me. It's like to turn there once you're done.
Oh, yeah, perfect. So residential density is, non-conforming is above six dwelling units per acre, and conforming is everything that we just discussed, including residential density under six dwelling units per acre. So those are the only, those are the regulations that are on there right now. And then on this side...
So on this side, as drawn, and as it is drawn does not correlate to the numbers in the text right now.
Right. I think that's what Cynthia said, yeah.
But like, as it's drawn, the Country Villa apartments would fall under either A2 or under the transitional zone next to A2.
Yep.
Those apartments have about 200, 300 people living in them, and are about 15 dwelling units per acre. They're about half of my constituents. I think it would be somewhat unreasonable to render a tenth of Castroville's homes as non-conforming, so I hope that...
Well, non-conforming is something that's already there.
I understand. But we're saying that a tenth of Castroville lives so close to the airport that it is unacceptable for us to allow them to take that risk. I think that if that's the case, then we need to be thinking about the airport's uses if these areas are all as drawn. Although, if the text is dominating here, then these areas are going to get much smaller. But I just wanted to say that.
They should get a whole lot smaller.
I'm going to come in here with a metaphorical ax if it's trying to put those apartments as not...
Yeah, so they should get a lot smaller.
And also, the 34 and 16 have different widths at the end in the text on the approach zones and are shown as symmetrical here.
Wait, which one is this?
The approach zones have a, runway 34 has a width at the end of 3,500 feet, whereas runway 16 has a width of 1,250 feet at the end. So this is not symmetrical. And 16 is the south side, if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're correct.
So it'll be narrower on the side pointing towards Lacoste.
Right. And so that, those were all things that we noted that, you know, as we worked through it, it's that somehow or another, even from the get-go, whatever mapping was provided was not matching up to the text. And so we need to make sure that we get all of that, you know, so it does match.
Yeah. I'm saying this in part for the benefit of the people who can and are seeing this drawing as well.
Well, I know one of the questions we received tonight was, you know, will Lacoste be impacted? And, you know, kind of the categorically answer preliminarily from the draft that we've put forth is no, because more or less, the restrictive covenants that are in the proposed ordinance are almost, like 95% are on airport property. That's how little off-airport property will be impacted by the proposed code. So the concerns you have, valid, because this is a bad picture, but the proposed code would cut all that out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
When they have properly laid out these zones in their CAD system, it's a pretty simple operation to upload that into a KMZ that can be distributed to anyone. They can look it up on their phone or their computer and see where their house is relative to one of these zones. And I think we should get that out ASAP.
After we get on the GIS and we got the stuff?
Absolutely.
KMZ?
KMZ Fox.
Got it.
I just never get it.
All right.
I want to make a note of that to make sure we don't lose sight of that one.
And Councilwoman Martinez had asked about also making sure that we include the airport advisory committee in on these. And so, again, this is getting the information out, making sure that everybody's aware, and that includes residents, nearby residents, community members, our partner with Lacoste or with the county, with basically everybody. We're just talking about it. We're explaining the direction that we're going, giving you a chance to ask questions. Did anybody else on council have any questions or concerns with where we are with this right now?
I don't have any more questions until we have a better visualization.
Okay, and I'll open this up a few minutes. Just for the record, do you mind just standing up here and stating your name and address?
My name is Charles Persannick. I live at 1918 County Road 4713. It's about two miles south of Sammy's Restaurant. Just a simple question, are we going to be provided a copy of this proposal and this map? What is, if 100% correct, you can't tell where you're at on there.
Right.
My property is somewhere between...
Will you zoom up there?
All the discussions before have been about the approach and departure path.
Yes.
Is it supposed to be proposed without those zones?
Nothing, really.
No restrictions at all?
Well, there are restrictions that are already in place that the FAA, that the FAA's statute requires. Those are, there are height restrictions and a requirement to notify the FAA if you're going to build anything of any height, basically. And those have been in place since, whatever, 1977 or for a long time. So those aren't going away. We're all going to have those. And that's what we've been lovingly calling the stadium map. So that's why it looks like a stadium, because that's reflective of that ordinance. The ordinance is that city council is discussing right now, and the ones that will have actual restrictions on number of houses and that sort of stuff, that's all going to be limited basically to the rectangle that you see right in the middle, which is those approach paths, et cetera. But even that is going to be shrunk down considerably from what you see depicted here, because it is, because we've shrunk it down a lot.
About 10,000?
About here is that, I'm a pilot, so there's nothing in addition to the normal FAPIT that explains what's about approach and airport. You're not expanding the front road.
Not, you asked about the zone that was south and west, or...
I thought it was C and B.
Yeah, right.
Is that a new lighting map?
Yeah, C and B are not being regulated.
Not at all.
Not at all.
Other than FAA rules.
That's my understanding, right?
So that's our, that was our directive.
I'm looking for head nods, so yes. Yep.
So it looks like, actually, this doesn't even get down to Bill's place on the east?
Sorry.
It looks like, just based on the way that the river curves there, it looks like, I can't even tell.
There's the river.
Yeah. Well, and your place is down toward the, like, right around where it says runway 34. I think you're right around in that area. I think it may be even further away.
I don't tell them.
Yeah. But we'll get something out so that you can see exactly where it is, exactly where each different thing lies. Again, this isn't a fully accurate map, as we just discussed. If you want, you can have my hard copy of this, and we can also email you the, what we have proposed right now.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, please.
Is there any reason why, once you get the GIS properly scaled stadium, can we not see on the same GIS map the outlines and the property numbers superimposed?
Well, we would have those, we have the, yes.
We have that layer in there.
Yeah, we have.
In our GIS system, yes.
So my point is, when we get down the road to where we believe we really understand what we're looking at, you should be able to see your property outlined on this drawing and see exactly where it is according to the GIS, because we have that. We just got to get it all on one page.
But I do have a question, clarification for council. So because this is being, you know, the direction that staff has received is, we want to see a code that reflects the minimum requirement by the FAA in Text dot aviation. So that's what we're developing. And that is reflected, you know, the closest airport to us that has a code that'd be similar is New Braunfels. New Braunfels basically adopted the bare minimum. You could argue that, but it's basically the bare minimum. So that's what's being prepared. When we adopt that, ordinarily, what we would do for the public media, the sake of public is, et cetera, is send notification, whether it's a letter or a postcard, whatever, to the people that are impacted by that zone. There's two different groups, right? There's the group that's in the Part 77, which is the stadium map, and that's a lot of people and a lot of mailers, who would get worked up over getting something in the mail, when really, there's no additional regulation that would be applied to them. It's all the stuff that's already existing. We aren't changing that. And then there's a group that'll be impacted by whatever regulation is being drafted, which right now, as I stated before, it's going to be a very, very limited number of people, because most of the restrictions are actually on airport property. And there's only a few folks that'll be impacted that are immediately around the airport, mostly in those approach areas. And it doesn't go very far past that. I don't even know that it goes past 90, right? If it does, it's bigger than 90.
Yeah, it does. It goes a little bit past. You can see, it goes, that's Walmart there on the very left-hand side.
Yeah, I'm not trusting that map. That's why I'm not using that map.
Because the measurements are...
I'm pointing out the incorrect map.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I'm basing off a conversation that I've had with staff. Like I said, it was, it's very minimal. So my question for you all is, the notification, are we, how do we want to go about making sure the public is aware of what we're doing? Obviously, we're going to post it. We can send it out to the group that Deborah has shared before, but I don't want to, it's a fine line. Like, I want to make sure that we get public input. At the same time, I don't want to alarm people about something that's very different than what had been proposed originally.
I think that it's appropriate to anybody that has restrictions that fall within this. Absolutely, they get the notification. I don't know, is there a reason, people that don't have restrictions, do you see a reason that we would send it to the folks that aren't impacted by it, just for awareness?
Just a good neighbor policy, so I'll see what the heck you're doing.
Yeah, and just to let them know...
A good point made over here is that what was confusing on the previous map, it's going to be for the people in the maze zones, put things in AGL, above ground level. So when we hear from 30,000 feet, you know, where you're starting with, because I have property that's 70, 80 feet below the airport, some that's almost the same level as the airport. Or maybe you could tell them now, I don't have anything more about, but the people in the A zone, I'm sure will do. And Lacoste, those extensions out there, that's low-level approaching coming through there. It's going to affect Lacoste. It's going to affect United to the north also. That's all I was...
Okay.
I think...
We'd like to have a copy of the...
Yeah, here.
I think we should send out notices to those areas, even though they're not affected, just to let them know that they are in this area, but there's no change that's going to impact you. So what I will tell you is that when we get to that point where we can, when we can lay out the schedule for public hearing and public notices, we will tell you exactly who must be noticed according to the law, and then you guys can make that policy decision on who else y'all want to notice.
Yeah, absolutely. And anybody that wants to get on the email list, Deborah is still maintaining that, so we can send it out to that as well. I think that most of the people that were concerned before got on that list. So we are slow rolling this and trying to do this as carefully as possible. Okay. Any other questions from the, from the audience? No? Okay.
I have just one more remark. Here we have figure one and figure two are on the same map, the airport hazard zoning and the land use zoning. It would be really nice if we could get separate maps as well as the combined one, just so that there's fewer lines in there.
Agreed. We will have different layers, and that's the way it was before. You could toggle the two layers on and off, the 77 and the other ones. We'll make sure that's the case. And to the extent, if there's going to be multiple zones, then each zone would have its own layer.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, if we could remove the old ones.
Yeah, I think that that's...
Because having those C boxes is confusing in a lot of...
Understood.
It's very possible for the engineer who's working on these to make those KMZs elevation relative, so you could actually look at them horizontally and see where you are relative to another on Google, or if everybody's following the view.
That's kind of cool.
Yeah, it is cool.
Okay. So we'll definitely get the, once we have the correct map, and again, I'm a little bit hesitant to send out this because it's a little bit, but, I mean, you guys are impacted either way. So that way, you've got those. If you want to get another hard copy, I think that Deborah can make a copy for you right now, or we can email it to you.
This doesn't mean anything at this point.
Yeah, because it's wrong.
When you expect to have the new map available?
Cynthia?
That piece, yeah. I was going to say, that piece goes false to Scott and Brianna, because I think we could...
Oh, because you gave the dimensions.
Right, right. So I think, you know, I think we're good on the text. We just need to get that piece worked out.
Yeah, so it'll probably be a couple of weeks at least. Yeah, probably a couple of weeks. But we are, like I said, our timeframe is prior to any public meeting. And so, and I know, understanding this isn't a public meeting, this is intended for a brief with council, but before we actually invite the public in and send out those notices, we will make sure we have all that stuff prepared. And I don't have a date for that meeting yet. Probably November timeframe is what I would expect.
I don't, I think it's more important to do it right than to do it quickly. I don't, I think it's more important to do it right than to do it quickly. So, okay. So we'll make sure that you have the most updated as soon as we can. Okay. Anything else? Great. All right. Thank you.
If I press a button, I just pull the plug.
You just pull the plug.
All right.
Flatline.
Okay. I am gonna, are you in a rush? Do you mind if I rearrange a little bit? Because we have a couple of other things I wanted to get to these folks a little bit earlier. Do you mind if I push yours still later? Hmm? Okay. Cool. All right. I'm going to table the...
I thought you were talking to her.
Oh. All right. We're going to table number 13. We'll go on to 14.
We're timing it?
Not tabling.
No, no. You're just bypassing.
We're bypassing it. We're moving it around, sorry.
They're reorganizing.
Wrong terminology. All right. So the next item we're going to cover is review and take appropriate action on approving an amendment to the Waste Management contract. So we had talked about this before, and I wanted Scott to introduce. This is in reaction to a lot of feedback about how things were going, so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's right. And I also want to recognize Chris, and his wife Melissa is here too, but they're here for two different reasons. Chris is with Waste Management, and Melissa is with CPS, and I'm just happy...
Raise your hands.
I'm happy to, and they're sitting, not sitting next to you, but I'm happy to have ranged this night out for the two of you, so you could be in wonderful Casterville. I feel somewhat guilty, but I don't know. You said some real eloquent words at the last meeting, but really and truly, I think Waste Management's been a good partner throughout all of this. We have been a little bit like a schizophrenic brother-in-law, just struggling with trying to figure out what we wanted in our, you know, our trash contract, our waste management contract, namely, that our concern is, how do we beautify the city? How do we deal with non-compliant brush piles when we are coming off of a history of take-all, where you can just take whatever you want and put it on the curb? And now we've had to reduce that, and then we had to kind of reduce it again, so it was eight yards, now it's six yards. And we've made requests of Waste Management, you've been very responsive, and the most recent response has been to go back to what we discussed previously, which is, or what we had previously, is where we could just put out either bulk or brush every month. So every month, we're now going to have the opportunity to do that. We need to message around that, and Waste Management has prepared some messaging that we can share out. It looks somewhat like this. It does have some stuff that has to be changed on it. It's not perfect. We're going to update it a little bit more, but we will have something that will show very clearly the calendars and that kind of stuff on it. So we appreciate that they're going to these extra efforts to try and support the city of Casterville. But I want to give some time to Chris, because you made the journey to come here and share any thoughts, comments, or concerns you may have.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, everybody. Mayor, council, and Scott, thank you for the comments. Deborah, I'm not sure, I just sent you something, just, we have a final draft of that particular file, in the case we can pull it up. I just shot it to your email, in case you can pull it up. Okay, no worries. So what you're seeing right now, there's an error on there that we've corrected. Staff has it as of late this afternoon. You'll see two different shades of green on that calendar. That reflected the previous style of what we had.
We changed that.
We only got one shade?
Yeah, these are the new ones.
Yes.
Okay, you got...
They are the new.
This issue, it says bulk and brush items is replaced, and then bulk and brush items is replaced, and it looks like two different days at each every time.
Yes, there's a new one. But, I'm sorry, we'll get this worked out, done for tomorrow, the moment this is executed. So this, the amendment will take effect, this is a second amendment to the contract. This will take effect October 1st, and we will commit to providing whatever information is needed. Our, from what I understand, this file has been corrected. We'll get you it tomorrow morning for everyone. Essentially, it'll be the second full week of each month, you can place out bulk and/or brush items. The only thing that we are asking for you to assist us in communicating with your neighbors and your friends, is that we have the piles in separate, the material in separate piles. In the past, which we've kind of seen is, you might have some material that is actually compliant, but it's loaded on there with a 150-pound log that we can't get to. So, you know, by separating these items, having a brush pile and a bulk pile, we'll be able to come through and have that swept up in a clean manner. And we're working with Devon's team to ensure that compliance is done. We'll be starting that Monday. We ask that everybody has their items out before 7:00 a.m. at that time. I think the city has set, in, I guess, an internal policy with its residents, to ask you to place your items out no sooner than the Wednesday before the collection period. That's all a part to mitigate this town looking like a mess, you know, every week of the month. So we're going to have set periods that we're going to come through and collect, and we ask that you begin setting that out a few days prior to. So it won't always look like there's a bulk and brush period going on. But appreciate, you know, the opportunity to address this. I know there was some confusion over the past couple of months, but I'm glad we were able to work it out and how we got to this point. We'll go from there.
What are you pointing at? So there are two points of clarity, I just want to clarify. So it's six yards...
Six cubic yards is the allowance that has been in the contract since 2020.
And it is six yards combined, not put out a six-yard brush pile and a six-yard bulk pile. It's not going to, they're only going to pick up half of it, right? Because it's six yards total, not 12 yards, six yards total. So I want to make sure we know that. And then, I know that no one would ever do this, but we, you know, we met with your, you've got a lovely team. We met with the folks, the, I think one of the things that's been impressive about working with Waste Management is that you involve, you know, your crews and the people that are on the ground doing the work. So it's not you and I have a meeting. It's very often you and I and your operation director that knows Casterville and works with the actual drivers that go around and pick the stuff up. And so they have firsthand knowledge of what they see. And in those conversations, they've kind of told us, here's some of the things that we're, for us to understand what the challenges are from enforcement side, here are some of the things we're running across. You mentioned one of them, a big log. Do you have any other anecdotal examples of things that people have put out?
Sure. One of my favorite ones that we've seen, not here, exactly, but we've seen it a few times, just cutting down a tree, you know, and just pulling it to the curb. No limit it up, no trimming it out. I mean, we've seen some crazy stuff out there before. We've also, we've also...
Four feet, so again, I'm going to reiterate this, we've sent it, people are like, why don't you send out a notice? And I want to shoot myself. There's, we've sent out a lot of notices. It's four feet. So if you have a sampling, saplings can grow 12 feet tall, and you cut it down at the base, you need to cut it up into four-foot sections. We aren't going to be there with a tape measure, but we'll know if you drug the whole sampling out, because you can't fit it in the drop, right? So it's that type of stuff.
Yeah. You know, so, yes, thank you. One thing we've also come across, and this is a nuance with this community, and I know there's maybe one next, you might use a lot, and there's some others. We understand that some folks don't have, you know, a big enough area right in front of their home, or with their driveway spacing to place that material out. We are perfectly willing, and this is how it was set up initially, if there's any nuance like that, as long as we're made aware via the city, we will come through to that open lot, if you will, and collect. But what we have seen in the past is quite a number of folks using open lots, so this to place out a multitude of materials. So, you know, this is meant for residential services at your home. You know, we understand that if lots don't, aren't built upon, they don't have a utility bill, that's where we experience that. But if we know that that lot belongs to you next door, and we're working on it, we'll address that. So, four, again, thank you for bringing it up. Four feet in length, six inches in diameter, 50 pounds in weight is something that we like to look to. And it's not just, you can put that out, but put out several limbs of that weight and length. Greatly appreciated if anybody wants to tie and bundle those items, and just grab it and go, instead of picking up a bunch of sticks all at once several times. So outside of that, we see a number of non-compliance with batteries, televisions. Those are all hazardous items that we're not legally allowed with our TCQ permit to bring to our landfill. So you actually have great service. It's at-your-door household hazardous waste program via Waste Management. You just call a number, we'll schedule a time to come and pick it up. And that's unlimited service to your residents. It's a concierge will come pick it up for your door. So any hazardous items, electronics, televisions, paint, aerosols, flammable material, gasoline or anything like that, we'll come through and pick it up. So, paint and computers, yes, sir. There we go. As long as you're not running a paint business out of your house or a computer business, that's about it.
And if you want to put together any flyers that we can include in the utility bills, we're happy to do that as well.
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll put it in the, we put the newsletter in, trying to get more, we're getting more people actually reading that newsletter. We actually do put some really good information in there, so...
Some of them don't look up until the 24th.
If we could also put this out on maybe Nextdoor or any other social media that the city uses, because since the newsletter won't make it in time for the, go into effect for the October round.
Yep.
You know, Scott, I want to mention one thing, because it's a nuance that is sometimes
overlooked, and we've talked about it. I know some folks, most folks, will just go out there and do the yard work themselves, and we understand that there's others that live out of town, or there's plenty of trees out there that they don't want to get up on a ladder and cut down that stuff. All of our agreements, and this is kind of standard for the industry, that this is supposed to be residentially generated material, you know, meaning us, and I understand there's people with mobility issues and disabilities that they can't actually perform the work themselves. We'll work in scenarios like that, but oftentimes, this is some support, you know, that we just ask for you, from you all. Many times, there's tree trimmers that are, come through, and they're actually already charging folks for a disposal of that material, and they'll just say, hey, you know what? We're just going to leave it out there. And they definitely don't follow the rules set within the contract, because they're just cutting down, you know, entire tree trunks and placing them out there. So those are also scenarios we've seen, maybe seen three or four over time, but if you can help communicate that with your ordinances, and in fourth, we'd appreciate it.
So, thank you. And that reminds me, presently, we do not have a method of getting rid of stumps and trunks and that kind of thing. So if it's larger than six inches in diameter and weighs more than 50 pounds, we don't have a way to haul that off for you. Someone else is going to, you're going to have to find someone else that will take that and burn it in their cousin's, you know, yard when they can, right? Out in the country somewhere. But we don't have the ability to do that here.
Or just post it...
What's that?
I mean, honestly, just post it on social media and say, come pick it up. There's a lot of people that'll just come pick it up for firewood.
Right. So, just clarifying. And we are working with Waste Management to provide some community cleanup dates, and as we identify those, we will share that out.
Question?
Sure.
Because I brought this up regarding commercial side. What do you recommend commercial businesses and that do with their brush? Put it in their dumpsters?
Sure. So, well, commercial businesses, they certainly can use their dumpster. I would caution them to ensure that they cut it down as much as they can, so it's not billing out, and then we're charging for an overflow fee. They can also use a roll-off container from our company, and if it could be safely placed, we'll bring it out. They can also bring it out to our landfill, which is right down the highway. We would also have what is called Baxter. It's like a Teflon bag that you can buy at any of the Home Depot or Lowe's stores, and you can fill that up with, not just brush, but it could be any kind of bulk or demolition material, and we'll come, you call us and we'll come and pick it up.
Where is, you said it's not far away. Where is it?
So, if you're familiar, as you enter San Antonio, it's Highway 90, right, Ray Ellison Road by Lackland, Air Force Base are right there. So if you're going 410 west or south, whatever you want to call it, right before Trader's Village, we're on the right-hand side. That's our landfill.
And what can people bring to that?
You can bring anything you like. I mean, there's a charge for it, but, you know, for those larger items that folks cannot get rid of within the guidelines of this contract or any other items in excess...
So they could bring their tree trunks to you as a charge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That is one option.
Yes, sir.
Great. All right. So...
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, council? So do, yeah, so the motion would be to approve the amendment to the Waste Management contract as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. That's good. Next item.
CPS.
Do you want to move to 15, so that Melissa can go with Chris somewhere?
Yeah, let's do that. All right. So, next item is review and appropriate action on CPS gas O&amp;M contract.
So for this, we had a meeting with Richard Luhon and his team the other day. Was that yesterday? It was yesterday. It's only Tuesday, Scott. God, Lee. Long days. There are a number of things in the contract that frankly, I haven't had the time, you know, I have, this is my first opportunity to really review it. As I explained to council at the last council meeting, this is a six-month contract, so in the past, we did like three-year contracts, some renewals. We're only doing six months, so that we'll get, we have the opportunity to explore other options with our gas system. And, you know, grateful to CPS for allowing us that opportunity and for giving us a flexible option. So this is a six-month contract with a six-month renewal. There were terms in the contract that, again, were unfamiliar to me, and some of them, just two cities essentially contracting together for services, so it's a little different. There's only one, we were able to resolve most of those in just a conversation. There's one paragraph, and usually, as is the case, I'm the weakest link, there's one paragraph that we want to rewrite, that the attorney and I are working on. So what I'm going to ask council for is permission to approve the contract, authorize your city staff, your city administrator to sign the contract with CPS gas, on the provision that we resolve what is an intellectual property, a paragraph on intellectual property in the contract. And if you're willing to allow us to do that contingent on, you know, attorney's approval of that discussion, then we can approve it tonight. Otherwise, I'll need to wait until I get that done. I'd like to go and get it approved tonight, and then I think by the end of the week, we'll have that turned around to CPS and be able to finish the wording in the contract.
What do you say, Cindy?
I'm in full agreement with that. CPS has been wonderful in working with us, you know, on the question feedback, so I don't have any issue with that.
I think some, you know what that paragraph number is?
I don't know.
Well, I think that the motion would be to authorize the city administrator to finalize and approve a contract with CPS for the operations and maintenance of the Casterville gas system pending successful resolution of the items discussed.
Not to exceed $15,000.
I make a motion as presented.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
All right. Discussion.
Yes. In red in the contract, we provided, there was an addendum A, which was insurance requirement?
That has been revised.
It has been revised. Okay. It looked like it was.
So CPS has done a couple of other contracts with cities that are insured by TML. And when we had that conversation, that was something offered to us was their, so what was there is a different kind of contract language they've used in the past. What we're replacing that with is something that recognizes that we use TML and that basically conforms to what TML insurance would have us put in this type of a contract.
Very good.
Is that fair? Okay.
Further discussion, questions? All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
You guys can.
Great. Let's glass from dinner.
Go out to dinner.
Thank you all. I appreciate you being here, Richard. It's a drive for 20 minutes. But we appreciate it.
Okay. Next item is review and possible action on awarding an IT services contract. We have not action on this, but we have an update from Scott.
Yeah. So your IT committee, which is comprised of the mayor, myself, Councilman Dyer, and Scott Laalman, who is the executive director of IT services for the Virginia Valley Independent School District, met on Monday to review the proposals. We had seven proposals plus an additional one that, an additional group that doesn't have to submit a proposal because they already have an agreement with our, the Alamo Area Council of Governments. So we had eight basically options placed before us. The committee is going to basically do further review of those proposals. And there might be some follow-up questions that we'll want to ask one or two of the people who provided them. And then we're going to bring back a recommendation. The goal is to bring back a recommendation for the next council meeting. So we aren't, what I've requested is we're not, we're going to table the item tonight. We're not taking any action. And we'll allow this committee to finish its role in recommending a provider for the council at the next council meeting.
And I've got to commend you on the due diligence you've done with that. I think that one of the most telling things, we've been talking, we have talked previously about in-house versus outsourced on IT services. And I don't, you haven't shared the matrix that you put together with the different.
I didn't with Council and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know whose eyes are allowed to be put on it. Basically, I sent out to our city manager group, who I'm hosting, I failed to mention that, I should have mentioned that. In my report, TCMA, the regional meeting of the TCMA is meeting here in Castroville, will be at the saloon on Friday. And I'm very excited to be the host to that group. They came, they've been to Castroville before, but I think it's been several years ago. So I'm really excited to have them back and be able to brag on all the things, exciting things that are happening. But I had reached out to that group and just asked, you know, very simply, who outsources for IT? And if you do, how much is your contract? And how many full-time employees do you have? And then who, if you don't, if you do it in-house, how many full-time employees do you have? How big is that IT department that you have? And what is your budget for that IT department? And then I took those numbers and just divided by the number of full-time employees to get an idea of, here's what it costs per full-time employee for services. And the interesting outcome of that was that it's all over the board. You know, there are some, but by and large, those who've chosen to do it in-house, it does give them a certain level of control over what they can do. And certainly, they can, they can bring their own unique solutions to the city. But as far as just purely on a cost basis, kind of analysis would show even when you get really large, you got 600, 800 employees, outsourcing is a less expensive way to go. Not saying, I'm not going to say it's better because that would take some more due diligence to determine, but it's certainly cheaper to outsource services.
So we'll continue. Did anybody have any other questions about that? All right. Do you know, are we waiting on anybody else for the solar stuff? Do you know if there was anybody else that wanted to come? Okay. All right. Let's talk next about review and discussion on recommended utility rate changes.
For that, I do have a presentation. This is the one that was sent to you all. Give it one second. This is prepared to for us by Schneider. This is not an action item for tonight. This is simply a presentation to show you what our proposed rates would be to address the revenue that we need from the utility system. I do have one update to this. It's different on this one, Paul. There's a little green button. You don't hit the little green button. The big button, it's red. It looks like you shouldn't hit it. And it works. One of, the update is, recall, I gave you some forecasts for our utility system and for our general fund. The utility system, the last forecast that we showed, we were looking at fund and balance contribution. And their fund and balance contribution forecast was like $985,000 or something. It was approaching a million dollars. Very sad to say that in going back and working with Leroy, because I took those numbers to, I told you all, hey, we're working on a rate. Part of the purpose of this rate is to look at debt service and how we're going to pay for debt service. We have a billion and a half or so dollars we can pay. If we're kicking off a million dollars and, you know, a year prior, we kicked off 800,000, then we may not need to do that much of a rate adjustment. Unfortunately, there are a couple of things that were left out of that report. And I'm going to attribute it to basically just a glitch when he was looking at income. Because even as I was looking with him over his shoulder at a couple of reports, he ran a report twice and got two different numbers. It's not good. Right? But bottom line, he spent, Leroy spent about two days making sure the numbers were right. Right now, for utility fund, on purpose, we're going to spend about $240,000 more than we're bringing in. Because there are a little over $300,000 in utility fund expenditures in the CIP. So those expenditures, we're actually doing them. So think about the tree trimming, some of EMC services, some other projects that are identified in that CIP. Some of them were bond funded, some of them were funded with utility fund reserves. And one of the things you may recall is a table that showed you, here's the use of fund reserves and here's what happens to their balance over time, assuming we don't add any more money. So we projected that out, and that is what we're projecting now. So I will provide you all a separate report, probably just via email, that shows where we're looking at it on the fund balance for utility fund. But bottom line, unfortunately, these rates that we're looking at, we really do need to do something. Because this year, we have kind of two choices. We can raise rates and not affect the fund balance, or we're going to spin down the utility fund balance considerably just paying for the debt service and waiting for additional rate payers to come on in the form of, you know, water and sewer customers that are in our newer jurisdictions that are being built. So, with that preface, I just want to go through these. So one of the things you just approved was a gas O&amp;M contract. It is higher, it's not as high as it was originally proposed. So, a successful negotiation with CPS, we reduced their proposed contract price by about half. Unfortunately, that means that it increased our current cost by about half. So it just tells you the magnitude of what was originally proposed. But this, so the gas, proposed gas revenues or, I'm sorry, utility rate for gas, this just kind of shows you what the revenue would look like compared with the expenditures and what the net would be. So net, after the proposed rate, we're looking at about $10,000. Now, this assumes the prior contract amount, because that's what we had at the time that we ran this rate analysis. So this would be slightly higher because their contract, like I said, we were able to reduce it by what they had originally closed by half.
Can you explain the $60,000 difference in revenue would be attributable to a higher rate?
Yes. That's what I'm saying.
And do we know what that rate change?
That, I think that's the last slide. Thank you. I can.
Yeah, it's on the last one.
So I have a question as well. So the bond payments line item there, is that proportional just to the amount of money that the system brings in? Or is that tied in some way to what that?
On electric?
Or on?
On each of them? Yeah, yeah.
Or is that tied to like what the bond money was spent on?
It's tied to what the bond money was spent on. So on gas, we replaced 300 meters. So we had to spend, we had to buy 300 gas meters. And that's what, that's their portion of that cost. Not only that, we put new radios, new, you know, receivers on each and every one of our gas meters as part of the AMI system. So even the AMI, the overall AMI project's a little over $2 million, I believe. Gas system has a proportionate share of that cost. Right? We also had to pay a separate contractor to install all those gas meters. So we bought gas meters, had them installed, and then paid for the AMI upgrades of all of our gas meters, to about 600 or 900 meters. So that's what that is, that's what that's reflecting, is their proportionate share. That's a great question. And that's what, generally, that's what all of these are. So, and that's actually why sewer, so even with the, I think I was talking to the mayor about this, I can't remember if it was the mayor's or someone else. But even with the River Bluff project, which is not an inexpensive project that we're doing, because it's about 1.6, and then we had the AMI, which is about 2 million. So the electric has a portion of that. All the electric meters are being replaced. It still pales in comparison to water and sewer. You know, we issued $10 million. We're going to spend seven on water and sewer. So when we look at the water and sewer rate, it's reflective, to your point, David, of the amount of money that's being, bond money's being spent to improve those systems. And I think that also is evidence, if you will, of the age of the system and the current condition of the system is, you know, unfortunately, water and sewer, not only are we in a time where water is really, really valuable and expensive because if there's just, if we're in a drought, but it also, we live in a system in Castroville that needs some pretty serious improvement. So going through this, electric is probably the smallest increase. It's like .0001 or something. It's 1/1,000th.
1/1,000?
Or 1.
Electric rate revenue?
.004. So one-half of one penny per kilowatt hour. Right? One-half of one penny per kilowatt hour. Less than one-half of one penny per kilowatt hour. And some of that is the, you can see the bonds on it are, you know, again, the amount of electric is pales in comparison to water and sewer. The other thing to note, and this is whether, so ultimately, Council is going to, tonight, you're not adopting a rate, but I do want a recommendation to staff what you want us to do. Because what we do then is we, when we change our rates, we need to do publication on rate changes. And we'll need to know what we're going to publish and start that process. Because we have public hearings and all of that to adopt a new rate ordinance. And then that ordinance goes into effect. But in the past, what we've done is made it effective January 1st, or with the first January bill. And that's really up to you all. You all get to decide kind of when you want to make it effective. But obviously, it has a budgetary impact depending on when you make it effective.
Question?
Yes.
When you say when we want to make it effective, the, these proposed adjustments assume that this is effective at the beginning of the fiscal year, right?
No.
In order for these numbers to be true?
That's a great question. And I'll be honest, I didn't, I didn't do these numbers. Yeah, Schneider is the one that prepared these numbers. And I don't know if they base this on 12 months or not, but I imagine they did. And, but the fact of the matter is, we can't make them effective at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's not going to happen. Because fiscal year is October 1st.
Then shouldn't we, shouldn't we be looking at numbers that we can make effective and or when we can make them effective?
It'll just exacerbate, yeah, it'll just exacerbate the issue that rates are going to go up even higher. Some amount of, you know, keep in mind, there is a fund balance in utility funds. So some amount of fund balance, you can and probably should spend and just make the rates effective when you choose to make them effective. Keep, and the other thing to keep in mind that this is not just fixing it ideally for this year, but really realigning and fixing it until we see all of the development come on.
We've been, we've been saying in council meetings for at least three months, we have been talking about, we're going to have to raise rates.
Yes.
And it's not a new piece of news.
Right.
So my concern is, we should get on with it as fast as possible to make the pain as small as possible. The longer we wait, the higher we got to raise them, if we're going to keep the same profit margin.
Okay. Well, so I don't know what the shortest time possible is, and I'll have to let you know what that is. Because I need to look at what the posting requirements are and when the effective date would be. And I just don't know that off the top of my head. But it will, the earliest you could probably make them effective is probably in second billing in November or first billing in December.
And one last question. These, on slide six where you have the four?
No, you're getting ahead of me, sir.
Okay. There, I'll wait.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea to not do it immediately. I've seen a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about how expensive people's utility bills are. And it's not just in Castroville. If you look at the plethora of complaints on social media, it's spread CPS, it's like all these different electrical systems. And it's funny because people are talking about the same issues, like somebody's trying to rob them. The fact is, we're in a heat wave right now.
Well, mine's nearly $500. And my wife has it at 78. You know, I know, and I know I'm not the worst off. I know that. But, you know, we, I don't think we use that much water or electricity and yet, you know, it's 500. That's a lot for a family to have to pay. I get it.
Mine's almost 800.
Yeah.
So I got a question. How does the solar tie into this part for our electrical system?
It does, it doesn't really because they're, solar is based on the avoided cost. And we're going to get into that on the solar rate. And there's a whole, that's in your packet, that whole letter that went out. But it's not really impacted by this, other than those payers pay an electric bill too. And so they're, to the extent they use our electricity, their bill would go up.
Right. But they, we buy electricity back from them.
Solar, so the only, the only way it might change is that our, they, they might see a slight, no, because we set the rate. Whatever that rate is in that letter, that anticipated our current contract, contracted price with LCRA. And I need to, the one question I don't have for tonight for the solar discussion is, when do we, when are we anticipating renewing that rate? Because we basically do it once a year. And I think it's not till like next May. I think we would look at it again next May. So we do it once a year, that rate changes, but it's not going to change for several months. It's going to stay the way it is. And that might even say it in that letter, I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, I think that based on our conversation earlier, I think that one of the things that you're talking about is there's a cost, like what we're talking about here is cost of running the system. It's not, it's really, that's, that's why we would need to raise rates, is to cover the cost of running the system. If there's a cost running the system, we shouldn't be reimbursing people with solar for the cost of running the system because we have the cost of running the system no matter what.
We're kind of delving into solar. I want to do that on the solar discussion. I don't want us to get too far.
Well, I want to make sure that we are talking about it during this because, and we will go into more depth when we get into the solar discussion. But it, I think that it is, it's directly tied to that.
It's part of our electrical system.
Yeah. So let's look at this. So your, what we're looking, this is what we're calling a decoupled rate. This isn't a new term that we made up, but the PCRF, what that stands for is Power Cost Recovery Factor. So in addition to buying our power, we also pay a number of other ERCOT charges that are passed along, right? Their freight. The solar rate is less than that because those ERCOT charges are not charged on that power production. So it's basically avoiding that, it's the avoided cost is what they get. So it's something less than that .702 or 0702. So we'll look at that in a minute and what that rate is. But decoupling this rate's important. And the reason that the staff is recommending it, we're recommending it both in gas and in electric. Gas, it's already that way, basically. Every month, we have a formula that calculates our, I'm going to go back on slide so I won't confuse you. Every, every month, we go, we have a formula that calculates what we pay for gas. It's very much like how your, your gas stations calculate their price of fuel. You'll notice sometimes randomly on a Thursday, the price goes up. Now, some of that's just the store owner saying, I want to go up on price. But a lot of it is, they just got their bill. They know what they paid for the fuel. Now they know what it's going to cost, they don't know what it's going to cost to replace it, but they know what it would, once they sell this bucket. So it's a constant juggling game. We do the same thing with our gas. If you were to look at our balance sheet, every month of revenue versus expenditures, it's like every other month, we're negative. We, it comes out, we come out positive at the end of the year, but what that means is there's even more of this when you're a gas customer because we're constantly trying to adjust to that. So one of the things I'm working with Schneider on is to build a forecasting model that will allow us to make smaller, we're still going to have to make adjustments because nobody has a personal law. But it will, it will allow us to make much smaller adjustments because we're going to forecast what the cost is every month and before we've actually paid it, rather than just pay it because what we actually do is just charge the actual cost every month of last month. And anyway, it gets very, very complicated very quickly. So I'm going to work on that to simplify it for our folks in Austin and hopefully provide a better product really for our gas users so that they can get something that's a little bit more normalized. So we're going to work on that.
Okay.
And that's already there, right? That power cost recovery, that GCRF rate, it's already baked in, if you wanted to go that way.
I just had a quick comment on the solar thing. And maybe someone is actually running a solar farm in the city, and so I'm about to put my foot in my mouth. But at the end of the packet here, it indicates there are 23 people with solar panels on their property. with solar panels on their property, so even if we were cutting them all checks for a thousand bucks, in the grand scheme of running the electrical system in Casterville, it doesn't make too terribly much of a difference, what rate we're, like it's, it's not gonna make or break the budget there.
No, it won't, it's just about fairness.
I know, I'm just, I'm just pointing out, it sounded like there was some concern.
Well, no, it's, it's part of an expense.
It's very small.
But it's still, if we're gonna account properly, we need to cover every item.
But we're gonna cover that on the solar rate.
I, I understand, but I mean, this is the electrical system, so I would assume that expense would come out of this section.
All right, we'll, we'll dive into that in the solar.
So, there is, so that, and that's what you see reflected in the rate, in the electric, the proposed electric rate is a cost of all the lines, all the transmissions, new transformers, the things, every time there was lightning strike, that's not, really and truly, every time you see a lightning strike and power goes out, we had to pay money to fix that.
Yeah.
If, if nothing else, if all I do is blow a fuse, we gotta replace that fuse, fuse is free, and we gotta pay for the time and the truck for the person who's out there to do that. So, there is a cost every time we, we, our, our system suffers an outage of any, of any kind, right? And so, that's, that's also part of doing business, to make sure that we all have power and reliable power, right? So, we're doing that. Water system, this is where it gets, uh, this is the first, it gets worse, uh, from water to sewer, but, um, you can kinda see the debt service, again, your bond payments of 517, anticipating an increase of about $273,000, that's related to, directly related to the water projects that have already been undertaken. Sewer, a similar, I suppose it gets worse, actually, water is worse than sewer, but, but sewer is already something that I know, if I get, you know, one complaint on water, I get 10 on sewer, right? Because the sewer bills are high. We already had a $14 million plant that we were paying for, and we're cooping the, the cost to pay off those bonds, and now, you know, what we're proposing is another increase. So, let's look at those rates, I think this was slide six, and oh my gosh, I'm gonna make that bigger.
Please.
Is that better?
Oh, no, it's on the previous slide.
Oh, wait. Can I make it better, bigger?
Oh, thank you.
You showed me how to do this before, right? There, oh, there we go.
There you go.
The question is, there we go, all right. So, you can see under gas, so the pay, proposed rate adjustment is basically about a penny and a half, uh, right, no, no, no.
No.
No, no, no. A tenth of a penny, more or less, per cubic foot of gas sold. On the electric side, it's, it's about a half of a penny, a little less than half of a penny, per kilowatt hour, and then on the water side, we were, we proposed leaving the base rates the same, so the base rate that everybody pays right now, that stays the same, and the, what would be increased would be the actual per gallon charge, so it's graduated based on your usage. So, you're, yeah, per thousand gallons.
Per thousand gallons.
So, your water would be a dollar twenty-five, or dollar oh-two, so, and then wastewater is $6.60. And, you know, for some people who are like a eight, or a nine, or a 10, that's, you know, if you're a 10, that's 10 times six, you know, $66 increase if you're using, if you're, that means you're using 10, that means when we measured your water usage to determine what your sewer usage would be, you were using 10,000 gallons a month, and that we definitely have some people that fall in that category. So, I don't wanna make light of what's being proposed, but this is, um, this is based on cost recovery, that this is what it would take to do the cost recovery. And again, I, no one wanted more than me to have better news about our, especially about our fund balance, because I really, really hoped that even as late as yesterday evening, when we were talking about it, we looked at last year, and I was like, well, last year, we contributed $800,000, and we still have, you know, we've basically accounted for most of our bills for, for September, so we should, we actually may have a good revenue. I was, I went to bed happy, thinking we were being a good spot, and unfortunately, Leroy came in very, very early this morning, before 6:00 AM, and worked on it till this afternoon, and then brought me in and showed me the news.
So, do we have to have, we have, I'm asking a question, do we have to have a public hearing before we can implement?
Yes.
Yeah, one?
I don't know, is it one or two? I don't know, off the top of my head.
I would encourage the city staff to move as fast as you can, to get this done and up for a vote as soon as we can, because the longer we wait, the more painful we're gonna make it on the customer.
I appreciate the direction, I'd like to hear it from the rest of council, but I appreciate the direction.
Um, are we going to have, because we do have those that are on fixed incomes?
Uh-huh.
Our senior citizens and everything, are we going to have a plan to help them if they come into a problem when they...
So, we have, we have two different things we do. We establish, you all establish Casterville Cares.
Right.
That is a, that's administered by a nonprofit organization that works with several utilities in this area, and we contribute $25,000 a year to Casterville Cares for them to then use only for our, you know, it doesn't go to anybody else, it only goes to our utility customers, but you have to qualify for that assistance, and they have certain parameters to, to qualify, I don't, again, don't, with those off, off my head. So, we will continue that program that you all started last year.
Right.
And we will continue the senior rate program, but other than that, there, there's anything else that we offer.
Because, because I've seen on social media, people voicing their concerns about it, and I know those questions are gonna come up again.
We're not eliminating those programs, they will continue as they are.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, the question was, implement this as quickly as possible, or what, what were you saying a reasonable timeframe would be?
Well, I didn't say, I, what I said was, in the past, just in my tenure since I've been here, you all have made the rates effective in January, and there wasn't really a rhyme or reason to that, other than that was, some of it had to do with our timing and when we adopted the rates, but...
Probably with the sewer stuff too, because don't they take October, November, December, whatever it is, to fix our sewer rate?
Yes.
I think that's why we do it in January.
That, that rings a bell too, so you're right.
And it would be at least a month, because we have to publish a public hearing at least 15 days in advance, the way our, our council...
And we have one meeting in November.
So, it would be probably...
And one meeting in December.
It would be at least probably the last week, the last meeting in October, where you'd have a public hearing, to be on the safe side, and then probably what it off. But you're right on the sewer averaging and plus getting it in the system for billing is part of.
I think that's why, I, I think that's why I heard, I understand where you're coming from, but I think there is a couple of, probably pretty good reasons why we waited. One was, yeah, you're determining what the water usage is gonna be.
That's the five month, the five month average.
Right, well, five?
Three.
It's a three month.
October, November, December.
And January.
And then they drop the, the highest side of those.
It's a three month average based on four months.
Yes.
If you want down here and ask anything, if you walk this way, or you can go.
No question.
First, the proposed rate adjustment, can we just add in a percentage? Because this is the total amount, right?
Yeah.
And, and we don't need that now, but the next time we discuss it, because I don't know if that's $6 in a thousand, or $6 and $10, but...
It's $6 per thousand, that's what I was saying.
What's our current cost?
Yeah, what's our current rates? Okay, yeah, absolutely.
I can tell you that. I have my utility bill with me, because I left it in my notebook.
I almost did mine, I looked at mine.
Currently sewer is $15 per thousand gallons. So, they're going from 15 to about 22.
$30 and, no, no, eh, $21 and $66.
So, the percentage increase is quite high.
However, what you help...
Thirty percent increase or something at sewer.
What it helps people is, is that if they have been restricting watering because of the drought restrictions, and no watering, or...
No, we had some real problems, though. That's what I, remember in October, so either October or November, I, I'm working on getting some dates with John and Reese Beck, and we're, that's a later agenda item on tonight's agenda, is set, trying to set that date for, we have two workshops, one will be on the utility, um...
Yeah.
Or policies, and the other's on the CIP. On the utility policy side, one of the reasons we really feel like as staff, we need to get this resolved in council, and I know the council has felt, and I know Council Dyers stated in the past, we really need to do something on our water consumption, because we're in the middle of a drought, and it doesn't appear that, there's a, there's a big percentage of the population that just doesn't care. They're using a little lot of water.
Well, and so going back to the question, I think, we're only talking about it on maybe two months difference, but I think if we figured that we're gonna roll this out first year, I think that gives a little bit of a breathing room, a little bit of like, hey, this is coming, there's no way to get around it, you can't run it at a deficit, especially when you have all of the citizens, you, you, each individual running at a loss, realizing the system, and we gotta be, you know, responsible. And so, I think if they were just planning to do this first year.
First year, exactly. I, I realized that I probably, that's probably not actually $15 per thousand gallons, because there's probably a base rate on there.
There, there's a base rate? Yeah, so, you know, you should have a base rate.
I don't know what the base rate is.
I'll, I'll, I'll get you a breakdown, I probably, I really should have had that, I don't know. I don't know, but I'm gonna get you, I'll get you what your base rates are.
$8, because I have to make a leap for the last two months of this.
Yikes.
But anyway, I'm at $8 a month for sewer, but it's because, as we can imagine, um, okay, that answers.
So, earlier, you said that these are covering our, our cost of running the system, and that's mostly true. It's also covering the cost of necessary maintenance and replacement on the system.
That's right.
But this up here is only taking into account replacements and repairs that have already been done, not the remaining ones that still need to get done, right?
Yeah, my answer was yes and no when you asked that question on the, on the Q and A, and the reason, I wasn't trying to be evasive, but they do look at our, our capital needs, our future capital needs, but they also look at our future system growth, and we still are anticipating considerable growth. The developers are still coming, they're still talking to us, housing is halted, and housing is what's gonna drive ultimately commercial build out, but they do look at that, and so as we bring on new users, that will expand the city's capacity for debt issuance, and really, future councils and future staff, and it could still be the same people, because we're always talking about two, three years down the road, but the next two or three years, this calculus will happen all over again, but there is a certain amount of expectation that, that future debt will be able to be handled at this rate as well.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, this isn't a fight for right now, but if, if there's new development in the, I mean, there could be a recession tomorrow, and then the housing market crashes, and it's seven years before we see 100 houses give loans, you know? I would rather see us setting a rate that at the very least covers our costs right now, if not, a little higher to allow us to do more of those necessary repairs, and then if or when that development comes, we can lower the rate again.
Well, the intent is, I'm sure this will be probably, and then ten, our, my straw recommendation with council is not to issue any additional debt, um, until or unless we see development, or there is the ability to pair it with a substantial grant of some kind, like where you can get half of the pay for it, it just makes sense, in which case, you still probably wouldn't be issuing debt, you'd probably use your, your fund balance, but that's your decision.
And that's a fair recommendation, I just think that there's a, there's a non-zero chance that we don't really have the option of whether or not we're gonna issue more debt. You know, we've got a really old gas system, and that's dangerous. So, I'm, I'm with Mr. Dyer, I think we should get these rates implemented quickly, if not, because I, I suspect we might have to raise them higher than this soon, and so every day we spend in the red just digs our hole further.
Councilman Dyer, anything else?
I've already said what I wanna say.
Yep. It's a tough situation. Just something, I'm, for those who are listening, in case it's not clear, what we're looking at here is the cost of running it and matching the revenues to pay for that cost, and so this, we're not, uh, when you look at any kind of system, you're looking at, you, you operate at a profit, but the profit here is reinvested back into the system itself, and so the profit is going to maintain, to repair, to renew, to deal with infrastructure. Some of this infrastructure is older than I am.
Some of our gas lines are so old, we don't have an estimate. Just says past useful service life.
Yeah, so... On the, the margin, if you look at it, you know, between budget and proposed, it's not, it's $40,000. So, that's not much of a profit, right? That's not much extra. Even in this year, where, you know, historically, we had produced some type of profit, even if you just say, well, we planned on spending $290,000 of our own fund balance to do some of, some much needed repair and project, we didn't go out and just borrow money to do everything, we said, we've got a healthy reserve, we're gonna use certain amounts of that reserve for certain projects that we feel are appropriately sized for cash infusion, and timed, right? You don't wanna issue 20-year debt on a five-year problem, right? You wanna try to use cash for those things, so we try to marry those up, but even with that, um, we used about, we would have, we used about, if we wanted to consider, about $50,000 of profit. So, even in current year, we're looking at about $50,000, and in the proposed budget, it's even less than that, it's 40. So, we're really trying to bring what we think is the least amount of increase to accomplish what's needs to have, what needs to be done to cover our debt service.
I would like to say one more thing.
Go ahead.
I think we have to be realistic about the economy, the CIP, and the inflation rate. We've been watching it for two years, it's out of control, there's no indication it's gonna get better, and all probability, it's gonna get worse, and so we should try to stay ahead of that.
Yep. And I think that maybe what we can look at here as well, I mean, we definitely need to fix the rates, but maybe we look at not a 100% fund balance, but maybe we can soften the blow with some of the fund balance that we have, so just find a good mix between those and...
So, what we'll do, that's some of, it's just like the rate comparisons, that's something we can do, uh, because these aren't being, this is not being adopted by any stretch, they're gonna, we're gonna do the public hearings, at those public hearings, we can have those level of discussions, and you guys can hone in and ask the types, those types of questions, well, what if we did this? What would it, and I can do fund balance projections on what that looks like, but I, you know, I'm with Herb on this, just my, putting my financial hat on, it's really, really hard, because there, as you said, there's a non-zero chance that some of these things are gonna happen, and, and more than that, you know, looking as, as Councilman Dyer said, at the news and what's happening broadly in, in our economy, there's nothing about it that's good. In fact, most econ, a lot of economists are scratching their head going, we thought, we thought we would have seen a different outcome, we'd be in full blown recession, well, that hadn't happened either, and if you wanna call that good, I, I guess, but, like, at the same time, people understand why it isn't. Why aren't we sliding to a major recession? It's not a good time to, to probably be spending a bunch of cash, because we don't know where things are headed the next time, so I would say, you know, keep your powder dry as much as you can, because worse times are, are not definitely ahead, but they probably are ahead.
Okay. So, I think then the answer is to bring it back as quickly as, as practical.
Okay, well, so at the next meeting, we will, I don't, I don't know if we'll post it for the public hearing for the next meeting or not, because it's 15 days, yeah?
Please.
Yeah, so we'll, at the next meeting, we'll probably have a presentation, something similar to this one, and then I'll also end the presentation and tell you what the timeline is.
Okay.
We can recall it as procedure.
Yep.
Okay, so then we would look at the second meeting in October for the public hearing on it?
If possible.
Twenty-eight, that'd be twenty-eight, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth. Tenth and twenty-fifth. I think I said 14th earlier, or 14th, 15th, it's October 10th.
All right. Great. Anything else? Next item, review and take appropriate action on city hall remodel.
So, for this, I also have a couple of slides to show you, and I do this in our, these are actually WPFs. Wait a minute.
Let's go back and review what we're doing and why we're doing this.
Yeah. There we go. I thought I'd only liked the PowerPoints for that. So, uh, there are a couple, a couple reasons why we're doing this, you know, number one is just we're stewards of this building, and, you know, just walk out into our lobby and look up, or just look around, I mean, the building needs some TLC. We started by just, you know, minor investments in fixing the leaks, making it watertight. Now, I wish I could say that it's absolutely true, it's watertight now, it's not, we've had some subsequent leaks since that, those are, it's basically warranty repairs, they've come back, and then the warranty repairs, I think all of those are signs of just the fact that this is an ancient building, and what's that? Why not? Why won't you?
The ghost of this building.
Oh, yeah, it's like, please. So that's part, you know, for, for my stance, that's part of the reason why this is being brought to you is because we need to do something. The other thing is, the same group that's doing these repairs and minor improvements to the building, you know, gave me a number to remodel the building that was very, very loved. And I was like, okay, well, if you really and truly think you can do it for that, which by the way, I don't have any faith that I can, then we should, we should at least look at this. And I brought that to council, you all in June, I believe, approved some floor plans. I started, you know, just very small, like small ideas, small concepts. But that is the, the, what, what we've currently been authorized to do as staff is, let's look at putting together a package to remodel this building. Doesn't mean we're going to remodel the building, we're gonna put together a package, we'll take it out to bid and then we'll see what the bid's come back as. And then we'll figure out, and I, hopefully, you know, I don't think we'll have that in time for our CIP discussion, but that'll be definitely a topic on the CIP discussion is, you know, depending on what comes back, when do we want to time the remodel of this building? When do we wanna try to undertake to do these things? And how do we wanna pay for them? In the same light of, and, and I'm not gonna try and be two-sided about this or two-faced about this, you know, I still believe very strongly, anything that we undertake to spend money on, we need to pair with grants. So, you know, can, is there grants for this building? There are grants for courthouses, the Texas Historic Commission does. I do not know if we would qualify. I don't believe we would.
No, we tried.
Yeah. And we didn't call.
Maybe not.
Yeah. So I, I don't know how much financing's out there. And so if there isn't, right, then, you know, it really falls to you to, to determine, well, how high a priority is this and how much you undertake? Because, you know, in my estimation, to do this, to do a full remodel and do it right, you're talking about a million dollars plus, right? And again, depending on the scope and that kind of thing. So tonight, in efforts of just trying to get to a finished plan, I wanted to get some feedback from the entire council. The mayor and I have met with some architects. As part of this process, we have one architect who works, who works with the remodel group. He did some basic plans, the mayor and I put our heads together and we, we made some alteration to those plans. And then he formalized those alterations and that resulted in the plan set that is up here that you all approved, you authored. You said, this looks good, right? Subsequent to that, we brought in another architect to look at the outside of the building. This gentleman's name is Brantley Hightower, he's very talented, he literally wrote the book on Texas courthouses. And it, being that we are an institution in Castroville, this building, we wanna make sure that if we're gonna do anything to the outside of it, that we do it in a way that is true to the vernacular or whatever the right term is. So that's why he was brought in. When he came in, as architects do, he said, you know, I'm, I'm gonna look at the outside, but I'm also gonna look at the inside, I'm gonna have some ideas. And he did. And so I'm gonna show you what those look like. So this is, this is just a reminder, this is what the plans look like. This is the, that side of the building would be the north side, northeast, I don't know. This is where we are now, the courtroom. In the original plan, these stayed down here, right? This stayed down here. You can see how the middle space was carved up. Really where the most remodeling happened is right here, because this is presently some bathrooms and a hallway and a, a small break area. That gets completely redone, right? And then the addition to the rear of the building is really the major change, right? There's hallways and, I always forget the term for this, but.
Atrium.
Atrium, I always think of aquarium, sort of feels like, but an atrium with hallways wrapped around it and some bathrooms. So this is what was presented to, to Brantley Hightower to kind of look at and think about. And this is his sketch. So looking at the exterior of the building, one of the things that, that he asked us to consider is get rid of those hallways, because it adds a lot of weight to the back of the building. Make the remodel as, as minimal as possible, the changes to the exterior. And so what he did is he kind of, he changed this, this, this exterior portion, added a portico, a portico chair or, or a porch that's kind of in, in keeping with what the front of the building looks like. So the rear of the building and the front of the building would look somewhat similar, just different scales, was kind of the idea. This again is a hu story, has a elevator and stairs and a cameler room and a men's and women's bathroom. Now, there are some challenges, so I don't wanna talk through those right now, but obviously without that circulation hallway, then something, you have to have a place for staff to circulate. So his concept was to do something like this. And by the way, this is the second floor. So you can see, he's moved the courtroom that was here and council chambers up to the upper floor. Now, I really like that idea. I like that concept because there's this neat, you know, arched ceiling up there and I can really see us doing something, someone with more talent than I do, really doing something really neat with that space. So that's, so he moved that up there and I really think this is a neat idea. Now, we did as staff originally look at putting council chambers upstairs. We pretty quickly eliminated it because of our concern over having to sprinkle the building. When you put an occupancy load over a certain size upstairs, you then have to sprinkle not just that, but the entire building. And this building, being the, you know, the age of the building it is, that could present all kinds of challenges. Not, 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 not alone of the expense, right? But I'm gonna talk about that as well because we, we addressed some issues there and I'll get to that when we talk about what the decision is, I'm asking for it before you're from. So this is his concept for upstairs. And then this is the downstairs, again, you see that back portion. And the major change was, he kinda created this front lobby area. Now, I've been very candid about my feelings about this and this is not my building, but these are historic walls, they're very thick, and creating a big lobby like this and breaking through those walls to do that, I, I don't like that at all. So what I've, what I've suggested to him is that, you know, potentially you could leave this side, the lobby, the way it is today. Maybe remodel the interior, make it look nicer and fitting with all the other changes we're talking about, but maybe this becomes the lobby. The challenge is, you still have a little bit of a circulation area, a circulation concern, but, but not really. So you, so the people in this part of the, where, where we are today, if this were remodeled to be office space, they would have an exit door, but it would go to the outside. Wouldn't be covered, it'd just be like it is today. Might be improved, right? There might be a walking path or something else, but essentially you'd go outside. If they needed to get to the rest of the building, they would circulate through this lobby area and down this hall like we currently do and through this area. One of the things that, that we also suggested in talking about this type of a plan is that rather than having the break room over here and a meeting room here, we would flip-flop those. So the break room would be right here in the middle. That actually serves a, it's a much better, it's about the same size and it's a much better location and it helps with a lot of different things. Number one, when you're having an important meeting, you don't have to worry about people walking through your meeting to get to the other side of the building, right? We don't have as much compunction about walking through a break room as we do walking through a meeting. And keep in mind, the meeting would then have two other doors, other exterior access. So someone, if you invited someone to a meeting at City Hall, they could, you could tell them, hey, park in the rear and come in this door. And you'd give them access through that door to your meeting room, that kind of thing. Gosh. The other, the other thing that that does is, that's also where all the restrooms and kitchen is now. So when we talk about having to redo plumbing, there wouldn't be as much change because that's where the current kitchen is, where the current bathrooms are. Refitting that area as a break room would be a little bit easier to do. So what we've, what I don't have tonight is, is a modified plan that shows all of this. Because I really wanted you all to tell me, first and foremost, what do you think about moving the council chambers upstairs? If we were to do that, a couple of things. The, according in, in the National Fire and Safety Code, depending on the occupancies upstairs, you would need to sprinkle this whole building. I've talked to Clint Cook about this, who's our fire chief, the ESD, and he told me two things. He told, said several that would then, then share it out with the, the architects and the group that are working on this building. He said, number one, understand the NFPA is just standard, it's just, it's just guidelines. They're not hard and fast rules, they're guidelines. That's number one. Number two, now they are life safety and that's important, but they are guidelines. That's number one. Number two, you are the jurisdiction that enforces this code. So you get to choose whether you're gonna enforce it or not for yourselves or anybody else. You're ultimately the one that gets to choose it and me as ESD, I don't really care. You know, you, you do what you need to do, kind of thing. So that kind of resolves it on one level. I still think though, that we should look at the upstairs, if we're gonna put it upstairs, one of the conversations I have with Brantley as late as today, and we've had a lot of back and forth with John, is if we were to put it upstairs, there, because of life safety and other issues, one of the things we should probably look at is maybe reducing that occupancy load by adding a couple of office spaces up there. So on the east wall, the northeast wall, where the records are presently, and actually, if you look, what's funny is, if you look at those walls, I've got some recent pictures of them, they have where someone ripped, there used to be walls up there. Someone ripped, you can see where they ripped out the walls and there's actually the, you can see the mark on the wall where the stud used to be and that kind of thing. So the idea is maybe we create some office space up there. What would that be, what use would be put to? I have no idea. It could be private office space, it could be space for your prosecutor, because that's where your judge would be. There's lots of different things we use for it. But what that, what it would do is it actually reduce the occupancy of the remaining space and we, we could look at that and, and really kind of, in a lot of ways, feel better about ourselves about doing that. The other, the other practical conversation that Chief Cook and I had was just the, the common sense of it, like if you put the courtroom down here, understand it's a smaller space than upstairs, I get that, but if you put the courtroom and council chambers here, we still have an average attendance. We have average attendance for court, we have average attendance for council, and there, there are times when it fills up, rarely.
Court is the one that would have the most.
There are times when we have, we have people here, but it's still not, this, this ninety percent of the time, this, this room's empty. And so we, we had this kind of common sense approach, like your, the overall occupancy of the building is gonna, is gonna stay the same whether you have the courtroom down here or up there. We're not, now, the city may grow and that could be, it's another challenge, right? But anyway, we just kind of common sense approach, we're like, why, why is it when it's one way, you have to sprinkle it and the other way, you don't?
Show us a picture.
Of.
In the sketch here.
Of this one? Yep. Would be right here. So it doesn't, like I said, it does, where those, can you see my cursor? Not very well, but where those offices would be added would be like right in here, so it'd allow, you'd have like a window in, in each of those offices. And I don't know how many there would be, two or three, I don't know, but that would be, you basically have a wall along here and then what he, this is not a final design by any stretch, we, we need to look at this and really put some time and attention to it, but what he was proposing is that you would actually only have kind of one permanent structure and that would be this room right here. And so during a, a court or council meeting, the chairs and dais would be set up out here, but when they're not being used, they'd be stored inside this room to allow for this to be a multifunctional space, you could do different meetings up there and that kind of thing. And that when, and if you needed a private place to meet, you could go into where those places, where those things are stored during the meeting and you'd have your private meeting inside that meeting room. I don't love that idea because in a meeting space, I, I like, as you know, I make good use of a TV and a wall and a big conference table and chairs. And so I'd like to have all of those things for our executive session meetings and this wouldn't offer that. So like I said, I don't think we're at a final rendition of the proposal, but he had some neat ideas and I think it's worth kind of just thinking through different concepts.
Scott next door, the.
Elsis?
They don't have some.
No.
That big upstairs room has a far greater occupancy load.
I don't know if they're, I don't, I really don't know how.
I looked at that.
Yeah.
Because it's, you don't have to put strength loads in if you do other things, your architect will do that. But we don't, I mean, seeing how people normally chose this, it's kinda like you said earlier, half, in fact, this year is half that upstairs. You could set the courtroom here and have all that as additional office space up there. But there, so yes, I, I like this and it's gonna be a lot less expensive.
I don't know if it's quite half, but.
Because you have that single, that single thing back there versus three of them back there. I mean, this year's gonna be a lot less expensive.
A lot less expensive.
You don't have the three hallways going back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This reduces, so there's a cost reduction to doing this for sure. You eliminate all that stuff and.
Who's gonna go and water the grass in that old atrium there?
Yeah. The atriums were interesting.
Yeah, it's a waste of money.
Okay, so that's Phil's opinion.
My views.
I, 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 I answered that.
So first and foremost, my question is, we'll, we'll talk about the, the exterior because keep in mind, we brought Brantley on for a specific purpose. It's staff's strong recommendation, recommendation to look at what he recommended on the exterior and to do what he's suggesting unless there's just not another good solution, right? Unless it poses too big of a problem, right? But we don't, I don't feel that way at all. The real issue I, I really want resolution to is, are we putting council chambers upstairs or not? And then, and then if y'all are in love with the idea, then we'll talk about, okay, then what does upstairs look like? Do you have any qualms or issues about trying to create some office space on the east wall and addressing, again, I think that was met favorably by both John and Brantley, we've talked about it, because it would reduce the occupancy level and I think it would make it more reasonable to do what we're trying to do. And it would actually allow us to create that executive session space when we needed it and that kind of thing.
Mr. November, District five.
I'm categorically against moving this court or this room upstairs. I think it's a terrible safety hazard. I think this is much safer down here. This is much more reasonable. This is the historical chamber and we ought to keep it this way.
My, my gut reaction to moving the courtroom upstairs was negative. I think it'd make it, I mean, it would make it harder for people to get up there, we have a lot.
You'd have two staircases and elevator, but the elevator has, is gonna have limited occupancy and yes.
And it's a difference of thirty stairs versus twenty stairs.
Yeah.
So four organs.
It would certainly be grand, might make my head too big to fit through the door. I'd go up thirty stairs.
We could do some really cool stuff up there, but.
But I, I think that broadly, I would be against moving it upstairs.
Which I wouldn't, I have no comp. This used to be the lizer, so to move this upstairs is not a good deal. So, but, but at the same time, what makes more sense? Just look at all of the, what makes more sense?
I like the smaller footprint for the addition that Brantley presented. I have a little problem with the removal of the, the major structural walls on the ground floor.
Yeah.
The interior walls.
Yeah.
Those, those are integral to the structure of this building and the support of the second floor. And I think.
In his defense, I don't think he realizes.
That's overcomeable walls.
Yeah.
Well, that just means making entries, not removing them. And there, there would be some hurdles with moving council upstairs primarily, I mean, even next door, when, when people are trying to use the elevator, you've got this line of twenty people getting, trying to get on the elevator and, and that could be a problem in an emergency situation. I like the plan, but I think it's got some major hurdles.
Councilperson, Arjuna's.
I like keeping the, the courtroom downstairs because I've seen one too many times where the elevator's non-functioning and those that can't do stairs, you know, can't. Oh, no, I had to do that in the military, no, no. But I mean, if anything, if we wanna use the space upstairs, we can move the finance guys upstairs.
That was the original plan. I'll show you what we thought about.
Yeah. And, and the only change I had from the original, when we first brought it up, the original design, is having the electrical closet and that in between the file room and the storage room as a fire hazard. So that was my, that was the only problem I had with the original thing that we had.
Tell me the same one more time.
On, on your original thing, on your original design, over where, near Deborah's office and that, scroll down where the break room is.
Yep, right here.
Right there.
Server's here.
Right.
Storage.
So you have files and storage on either side of an electrical room.
Okay.
Safety hazard.
Okay. Yeah, we've talked about.
Yeah.
So just to, see, no, subsequent to that conversation and input from the mayor and input from others, I think we've talked about redoing this, putting this over basically where it is now and then looking at the files sliding over and I don't know if we'll need the storage or not, but.
If I can speak again also, this makes a lot more sense as far as, we don't need this big lobby, and this, you can control access into the building by, again, the customer service and how you work that, you don't have to interact with engineer walls.
Well, the issue with here, so I, this is the challenge here, if, if we remove, so if we combine this floor plan with this one, because you lose the circulation here, you almost have to do a, you have to leave this lobby.
Right.
You could make it a short, smaller hallway, but because the doors are off-center, are not direct across from each other, yeah, sorry.
That's fine, make that your lobby.
Yeah.
And you can control access, the person there at the customer service can control access into the building, but you don't have to go in and redo everything on the other side and leave the, by leaving the court, the courthouse, the courtroom, the chamber, council chambers where it's at. It's gonna be less expensive doing it that way. The biggest advantage to this though is take off all that stuff on the back of the building and get the smaller back, because that's, that's expensive.
Well, the other option I'm looking at, and we're just, we haven't finished regaining is, what I found interesting is, if you look, this, when this, when these additions were put on for the school, ostensibly, I don't know if these doorways were here or not, right? We know that this doorway was because of the guy that got shot.
Back in the courthouse, yeah.
Yeah, way back then, we know that he was here, but we don't know if this opening was here, it wouldn't make sense for it to have been here, right? But it was added probably when the school was at it. Well, guess what? They might have added this one, because this would have been an exterior wall as well with the original structure, as well as this. So these two might be new openings, if you will, when the school was at it, and what I'm curious about is, right here where the vault is, look what's not here. There's not an opening. And I don't know, I, I think it'd be interesting to see, we're gonna do a LiDAR of the building tomorrow morning at six a.m., I'm gonna, let these people to do, they'll scan the entire building. It'll be interesting to see if there's an opening in this wall anywhere.
Didn't they already do that?
The lady was, with the lady that did that, ended up being hospitalized for like three weeks.
Oh, no.
She was really, really sick, and we knew that she was, not, it wasn't contagious, but she has an autoimmune disease that she deals with, and she had not been taking care of herself, and ended up in the hospital. So anyway, she didn't get it uploaded, it, so they're coming to redo it. Anyway, not costing us anything, by the way, ACS is doing that for us, they're also gonna do the library tomorrow morning. So, so anyway, I, it'll be interesting to see if there's any openings in this wall. If there's an opening in this wall, then that would be excellent, because then I don't have to, I could actually, we could still do something like this, and I would have the circulation I needed on the backside here to get staff, you know, through this, this section of the building. I still think, as we stated before, this meeting room moves to here, the break room moves here, these doors that are currently proposed would not be there because they wouldn't be needed, and these offices would stay basically the way they are.
Scott, if you have to cut a door back here, it's not that expensive.
I know, right here?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm...
There's a big opening, yeah.
I feel better about it, there's already an opening there though, Phil, but you're right, if we had to put an opening in, obviously, they did it, I think, at least three times, here and these other two, but we'll, we'll see how that works. So who else had comment? Did we hear from everybody that sent the email?
So, it, it sounds like generally, council is more in favor of leaving council chambers here. I thought that it was, I honestly thought it was a really cool idea, putting council chambers upstairs, because it is such a neat place, and there are times that we need to have that extra meeting space. We do have the breaking color center available, but it would be a good place for ceremonies and that kind of thing, and especially with removing some of the cost with some of the other stuff. But it sounds like that is not the general opinion of the council, so I think that we go with the direction of keeping...
What's your, I'm sorry, I, so, okay, so you're agreeing with the majority? It was cool to do it upstairs, but, so I wanted to, I wanted to show you this...
Yeah, I thought it was really cool, but, but I think that also, one of the things that I would say, like personally, from, from my, my perspective on this, is build as little as we need to, so we don't need to prepare for the next, we don't need to build out for the next ten years, we need to build out for probably the next five years. So adding in additional offices, just to add them in, I don't think that that's a great idea, I think it's better to slow roll this, wait till we get some of the additional revenue from the growth, and start funding through that, and just do what's necessary to, to repair and renovate as, as proper stewards of this.
All right, I was gonna try to show you some pictures, unfortunately, I had to, I think I had to get an app on my other computer to show them, so maybe, I don't know, it may, they may not come up, but, uh, yeah, we'll see. Nope, canceled, all right. You can only, you can barely see, so it may not help, but, in another city I was in, we had an old building that had been many things, it, in fact, it'd been broken up, there was like a funeral parlor, parlor part of it, there was like a meat market part of it, and it was just, it was one historic building that had been carved up over the years. The city bought it, renovated it, turned it into a really, really neat welcome center on the front side and on the back side. They didn't have a nice arched ceiling like we have upstairs, but they did have some really neat architectural details that they wanted to leave exposed. So I've shared these pictures with both of our architects as inspiration, so that when we do the upstairs, even if we're not putting the council chambers upstairs, we're still gonna try to do something that will allow us to highlight the unique architecture, not just build scab in a bunch of rooms, but do it in a way that, you know, you can really highlight that architectural detail of the ceiling. So I just wanted to, unfortunately, I can't show the pictures, but...
Something that we need to keep in mind with that, from what I understand, I have not seen it personally, but there is an old, I think it was a stage curtain that was up there?
There is, and it's for the school. It's from, we're, I guess, keeping it basically for the school.
I think that we need to look at, how do we, how do we incorporate that into the design?
For our school or for the Capitol?
No.
When the school was here.
We're just keeping it.
You come in the big town in the world, there was the movie theater next door, there was the Rainbow Theater, that was their big advertising, they never had them down.
Helen said that it was from the school here.
Mary came over though, wouldn't it? That time, if we looked at it...
Yeah, we should have looked at it, but we, after looking at it, it's figured out it was from the Rainbow.
Oh, okay.
And it gets that store down there.
It's in nice condition, somebody was gonna try to do some things, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe the Rainbow wants it back.
I thought it's part of the stage, I mean, one of the schools, not necessarily here.
Well, I think it's just, it's a, it's a...
It's big.
It's an old resource that we, that we have, we should take a look at, making sure that we're sure about that history.
The other thing we're talking about is, you know, where are we gonna display stuff? And I know this is really important to Mayor, but it's also important to me, and I just wanna, you know, reiterate, every public space, when we remodel, every public space should be used as an opportunity to display all these things. We've got all this stuff behind us, but it's not up on the wall, right? We need to create the ability to do that. A big blank wall appears, you know, we have a lot of space in this building that's underutilized presently, and the goal would be, as we, as we remodel, to create those spaces, not to try and create a museum necessarily, but try to, try to create places that we're, we're thoughtfully and purposely displaying some of the neat things that the city's been presented with over the years.
Well, when I came here, the mayor's wall was in here, and then we had to redo it because of water damage, and they got put out, which is good, but they can be, we can have a mayor's wall somewhere and kind of re...
I think comments on those a lot.
And, and a lot of people look at it, and then, of course, display cases, you know, the one we have in the hallway right now, we, we received from the airport, it was a hand-me-down, and when, when we remodel, we can build some that will have some opportunities to put some things out and keep up where people can see it and take care of it.
Make it like a recessed, and...
Yes, yes.
That way.
Don't recess it in those rock walls.
Or make it up above the, the ground to where, you know, you can see them up, and it'll be nice.
Okay. Anything else that you need direction on?
No, I just realized something that's, to me, hilarious, but, okay. No, I, I think that the main direction was, we're, we're not gonna put council chambers upstairs. So that, that's, that's huge, because it was really kind of hampering our effort to put together the final documents, take them out, so I will work on that, and that also resolves the whole sprinkling issue, we don't even have to think about it.
Okay, great. All right, next item is review and take appropriate action on right-of-way rules and private improvements.
Okay, my question is, we have a couple, we've gone out of order on a couple of different things, when do you want to get back to the other item? Is that...
I'm gonna go, actually, what I'll do is, I'm gonna do this one, then the solar buyback rates, and then we'll go back in, in a bit of order.
All right, for right-of-way, I also have a presentation, it's not this one. I already opened it, stop.
So the reason that this item came up is that, the interesting thing to me is that people are upset if you don't fix the streets, and then they're upset when you do fix the streets, because it's impactful, and it creates sometimes havoc in their lives. And we had a couple of instances where people had built sprinkler systems in, in the public roadway that they thought was a part of their property. We've had other issues where we had, there was a connection to the driveway, and we've done some minor support for those, but I thought it would be good to take a look at what the actual right-of-way is, and talk through how we deal with situations like this.
Okay, so this is a depiction of the right-of-way, of Lafayette Street, pick Lafayette because it was just in a construction project, and frankly, we already had the drawings and surveys. The survey didn't come with these pretty red and blue lines, we added those. The red line, just to make it a little bit easier to see, the red line is the existing pavement, that's the edge of pavement, and you can see it meanders, right? It meanders within our right-of-way. The blue lines are the, what we, what we refer to as the apparent right-of-way. It's an apparent right-of-way because we're basing it on where the yard's end and other things that surveyors do, right? But that, that just kind of tells, kind of gives you a visual for how wide the right-of-way is compared to the actual pavement width. And some people are surprised to learn, especially younger homeowners, newlyweds and others that just buy a home, a lot of times, they just don't know, that they don't, that that first several feet doesn't belong to them, it's, they may technically pay taxes on it or whatever, but it's, it's a right, it's, there's, there's, it's a right-of-way.
No, they don't pay taxes.
Easements and other things, right? What?
Well, they wouldn't pay taxes on property that wasn't theirs.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how it works, right, how they calculate it, but they calculate the land, they generally calculate the land value as buildable values, right?
Yep.
What you can build on. But either way, a lot of people just don't know. So this is meant to illustrate what that is. It's much, much harder to see, I will zoom in a little bit, move it down a little bit, I can't use my... I was gonna show you, here we go, you can see like the T, I believe that's designating a, a, a buried telecom line, there's also a gas line in there, there's also a water and sewer line in there, so we have easements all within that right-of-way. Sometimes easements are separate, especially in newer subdivisions, a lot of times, you'll have a right-of-way, and then outside of the right-of-way, you might have your utility easements, and so in newer subdivisions, you'll see that type of an arrangement. Here in this subdivision, because it is an older subdivision, a lot of times, we, we just stuck the utilities in our, in our right-of-way. The other thing you'll find is, we don't always have an easement, but, you know, very common to, to have lines where there wasn't an easement, and kind of the, you ask for water, we deliver you a water line. Future owners say, you know, hey, you know, do we have easements on this property? No, but you have a water line, well then, how are you, how are you gonna fix it? Well, you know, if it breaks, and you don't want us to fix it, you have at it, but you're not gonna have any water, right? So we, so cities had different takes, I was talking to another peer that kind of explained it that way, he's, he used to be in Brenham, and he was like, yeah, we don't, we didn't have easements for any, almost any of our utilities in Brenham, Texas, but we also had the, you know, we, we had the understanding with our, with our community that we, when we need to get on your property to fix it, an issue? It was to fix, put you back in, water, gas, whatever the issue is, right? We're there to serve you as your customer, and no, we don't, I need an easement to do that, we're, we're providing you a customer, if you don't want it, then just tell us you don't want our service, right? But no one ever does that. They need the service, we all do. So anyway, it's interesting to see how different cities treat it. So there's easements, and there's right-of-ways, and sometimes they're in the same place, that's what this is meant to illustrate. How we deal with that? Well, when we start a project, we start with the survey work, we start to identify what are the challenges, that's what the engineer does, that's why they charge the money they charge, and then they draw up plans, and then we mark it. Anytime in Texas, when you dig, I don't care if you're planting a tree in your yard, or you're, you know, you're doing something, anytime you're digging in, in Texas, you should always, 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 always call 811, because guess what? Sometimes there are buried cable lines you know nothing about, because the prior owner had it, maybe it didn't show up as an easement, because what I just said, sometimes...
After sixteen inches, you become an excavator.
Yeah, sometimes...
Fourteen inches, you're on your own.
Sometimes there's a utility, right, that you may not know about, because a utility didn't get an easement either. In River Bluff, the poor people in River Bluff had to deal with an outage, the contractor called to have that line marked, they had all the lines marked, but guess what? There was an AT&amp;T trunk line, seven feet deep, which, where there should not have been anything that was not marked. So they did their job, they did due diligence, they called 811, they had everything marked, they started their, their process, they knew where everything was, they thought, and even if it wasn't there, you know, even if it was, they were going seven feet deep, no problem, because seven feet deep, usually telecom's only two feet or so, everybody has their kind of depth they stay within, not a problem, guess what? Big telecom line was seven feet deep.
Out for a week.
Went right through it, and the poor guy spent...
No internet.
In a hundred degrees, with a tin over him, days with this little thing, and Arnie could tell us all about it, he told me all about it, trying to get all that stuff put back together. So it's, point is, call 811, please, because you really just, you just never know, right? And our own guys, when we don't know, even though we joke about backo locates, where we use a backo to locate a line, that's, that's not preferable, we very often have to get a sharpshooter shovel, so it's a little bit of an edge on it, and we dig carefully down to try to expose, it's called potholing, we dig a pothole and try to figure out, okay, where is that utility, until we can get its depth and size and where it's located, and we get its direction and that kind of thing.
And we own a hydro crew.
Yes, we do.
But I don't use that.
Well, we also have four crews, we have two water, two electric, and a sewer.
I don't remember if we had a council or if you...
But yes, we do, we definitely use it, yes, Phil, every time we can, we definitely use it, but as guys will attest, they also use shovels a lot, they do use shovels a lot.
Yes, they do.
So, this just kind of tells you kind of what we're looking at, as far as how we deal with that, again, we mark the ground, we call 811, and we put stakes, and we, we notify, and I, I frankly don't know our, all of our processes for notifying the homeowners, but when we see there's an issue, we generally try to reach out to the homeowner and say, hey, for instance, I know Lafayette, you have a sprinkler system here, we're tearing this up, your sprinkler system's in our right-of-way, you're gonna have to do something about that, because it's not our responsibility, right? They, I understand people's need to want to water grass, et cetera, but when we have a product, a public works project that's in our right-of-way, we have the right to do that, and we have, there's no requirement on us to make you hole because you had something in our right-of-way. Does that make sense?
How many feet is our right-of-way?
Forty-one point seven.
It will vary depending on where you are, so...
In historic Castroville.
Historic Castroville.
In, in historic Castroville, forty-one point seven.
Generally forty-one point seven, I didn't even know that's a hard festival. The other thing to know is that the street pavement, so you'd also think, hey, your street must be right in the middle, right? Middle. Right-of-way's this wide, street's gonna be right down the middle. No, no, no.
Just drive along Exco Street.
No. The fact of the matter is, the right-of-way is generally divided down the middle, so your neighbor has part, you have part, but, but the streets, when they're built, a lot of times, they are not built right down the middle, for a lot of different reasons, right? Maybe there's some big old oak that someone didn't want to lose, or whatever the case is. The bottom line, you can have a street that can be on the extreme edge of a right-of-way, it could be right down the middle, or it could be off on the other side, so, and this one, as you see, meanders, so just, just also understand that, that right-of-way, where the street is, you don't just march to the middle of the street and say, yep, okay, so you don't just march to the middle of the street and say, yep, okay, so I'm twenty feet off this, this is my right of way. No, that's what surveyors do. They'll, they'll, they'll mark where your right of way is, where your pins are, et cetera. They'll figure that out for you. But, but going to the center of the street is not the method that we should employ. What else, sir?
So the, the conversation here is, one, making sure that people understand where that, I think there was a little bit of confusion about how that works. How the right of way is where our streets are, the services that go in there if something happens inside of that. The other question was when something, so basically if somebody builds something in our right of way, in the street area between where we've got the red, the red is the border of the, the street, correct?
Yes, that's the edge of pavement.
So everything inside of that red is pavement. Everything outside of that red, up to the blue, is still city property. And so if somebody's building something on city property, then they have to understand, it's kind of like building a sprinkler system on your neighbor's property, if they dig it up, you know, you're going to have issues with it.
Well, this is going to get into another area that I love to talk about is people say, okay, great. That's, so what you're telling me is, Mayor, that is city property. Excellent. I have all these trees that are in the right of way. You need to come take care of it because they're your trees.
Yep.
Right? And the fact of the matter is, no.
They still have to maintain it, yeah.
They're your, if, if they're, if the trees are in the right of way, their responsibility is that homeowner to take care of that tree. They are enjoying the benefit of that tree. If they don't want the tree, we, it's okay. They can cut the tree down. It's not our tree. That is their tree. They have to maintain it, take care of it. The only time that the city staff is authorized to deal with a tree issue in the right of way is when it, it blocks public access or traffic. Or if it's a safety issue, if there's legitimate safety issues in kind, then we will address the tree. But, but bottom line, that's, that's really to protect all of us as citizens. Because we do not have the money or funds to go fix all the tree issues that are in the right of ways of the city of Castroville. We do, you'll see us doing maintenance on our electric lines. That's a separate issue. We don't care where the tree is with regard, with regard to the right of way. We care where it is with regard to our power lines. Because in that instance, we're trying to protect ourselves during a storm to make sure that we reduce the number of outages, right? We want to keep those lives away from some of the power lines.
Councilman Dyer, you had a question or comment?
I'd just like to make a comment. I agree with everything that's been said about city rights to right of ways. Nobody's disputing that. But for, for years, we didn't have a very stable streets program. Now we do. We, we have a good, solid, ten-year plan where we do all the streets in town in ten years. And it's in the budget. We do it every year. I'm going to tell you, in Lafayette Street, the street got four feet wider when they paved it. Okay, that's our right. It's still in a right of way. But it caused some problems for some homeowners. What I'm suggesting to the city council is, we're going to have a streets program every year. Million and a half dollars probably.
Well, I'm going to caveat that.
Let me just finish this. I would suggest we should take one percent of whatever the annual budget is for streets and give it to the city administrator in a fund. And give him the power to use his common sense to make decisions when something really unusual happens. I do not disagree with the premise that homeowners shouldn't build in right of ways. Sometimes they do. But we're not going to know all the circumstances every year. So I'm just suggesting, next year, when we do the street budget, maybe we set a little one percent aside, give it to him and empower him to deal with it. That's what we're paying him for. Exercise good judgment. And if there's a special case, let him deal with it. Instead of having to get a city councilman involved in every single homeowner that has a problem, which just irritates the mayor, irritates him and takes a lot of my time. That's all I'm suggesting.
Can I caveat a statement you made to, I just want to be clear because I don't want to set people on the wrong, wrong idea. We, yes, we have a ten-year plan to replace all the streets. That is provisional on the ability to fund it. I can't stress that strongly enough. We, our streets budget on, in the, in the city's budget is minimal. It's about, it's just maintenance. It's the materials and the, and the time to maintain. And I'm going to be, be careful of that word, to make-
It's like-
Emergency repairs, right? Potholes and that kind of thing. It's not rebuilding streets. The rebuilding streets comes in the CIP. The general fund issued a limited amount of debt two years ago. We have, we're going to talk about spending some of that tonight. We, we don't have that. We have about six hundred thousand dollars left of that bond that was issued to make city improvements with. That won't go very far with streets. So, and after that, my strong encouragement to you all is not to issue additional general fund debt until or unless we see substantial growth in the city that warrants the ability to pay for that debt in the general fund.
Yep.
Talking about utility funds separately, in the general fund. So that's what, and again, that's my, that's my advice. You all can, can do whatever you want with property tax. If you want to raise property taxes to go issue more debt, that's in your purview. You do it. It's not something we have talked about. We've tried to do it under the CIP and keep the rate flat at point five two three eight. So that's the point.
So the point is that we aren't necessarily, we will build streets, rebuild streets as we have the funds for it.
Right.
So the question is, when we have these minor repairs, how do we draw the, are you comfortable with, with council authorizing you to?
Not really, but I don't, Phil has a comment. He's raising his hand.
Couple comments. Our learning surveyor here. Castroville is unique and he'll explain it. But the city owns the streets. Other cities in Texas aren't like that. But first off, when you, when I bought my house-
Do we own all of them?
He'll explain, but, but in our, in my house, property pins show where my front yard is. And, and it's quite a bit of distance from where the asphalt is. We, if you drive in front of our house, there is paper stones in front of our house. I had to get a license agreement with the city Castroville that says, hey, you all need permission to put that in. If you have to come and tear it out, it's my, it's my responsibility to rebuild it. Because that shouldn't burden the city with that. If you go and make an exception for Mr. Smith on the three hundred block of Lafayette and you went in there and repaired his sprinkler system, then everybody else is going to want-
Is there a Mr. Smith on the three hundred block of?
No.
Okay. I know, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not actually talking with an actual person. This is hypothetical. Yeah.
So on the three hundred block of Stanford Road, if you repair that, then everybody's going to expect the same thing.
Use that process.
It's going to come into a really big-
Right.
Something to be concerned with. But again, I know where my property boundary is. It's on my survey plaque when I bought this property. I know everything on the other side of those pins belongs to the city. And I know that if I put something out there, and again, what I did is I formally came and got a license agreement with city council, with our learning council, writing this thing up that says, I can do it. Because it was an improvement to the city. But if you all have to come and tear it out, I'm the one who has to replace the thing.
Yeah, so-
And I'm happy with that.
Here's a statement I make about the use of public funds. They are public funds. Public funds should be expended to the benefit of the public, not to a member of the public, but to the public. So there are times when I have and when cities do partner with a private citizen on the cost of some infrastructure because it is a public improvement. Sidewalks, for instance, are not city sidewalks in many places. Many residential areas have sidewalks that the city doesn't maintain. They may come in if they get a grant or some other project and decide to replace them, but it's really at their, at their choice. It's, they are owned literally by the person who, whose house they're in front of. Well, if the city's making an improvement project, they might go into a certain area where there's really bad sidewalks and say, okay, for all of you citizens, we will split this cost fifty-fifty, right? So these are the types of things that cities do from time to time. And I think that's what you're talking about. It's not about, you know, replacing Mrs. Jones' plants necessary, necessarily at our cost. It's about, well, what is the public, what's the public good or improvement that might exist in a right of way that the city could partner with and replace? So I try to use my judgment there and, and I'll continue to do that. Just giving me a guideline saying, here's one percent and just use it as you feel free, I probably wouldn't do that. It's, it's, I still have a fiduciary responsibility to be very careful with the expenditure of public funds. That's what they are, so.
It's, it's just, it's a struggle between making sure that we're not, we're not, like, the entire citizen group is not paying for individuals. At the same time, trying to be good neighbors when something does arise. Councilman Kerry, you had something else?
The ownership of streets?
If you want to hear it, basically, what I talked with Phil about was the difference between an easement and a right of way. Many of city's streets are built in easements and owners own all the way, not necessarily in cities. More often in the county, the property owners own to the center of the street. The street is an easement. In Castroville, because Castroville was established before the concept of dedication of right of ways, where the owner actually gives it to the public. The, the streets remain the property of where we're on the property before the city was built. In that case, probably Henry Castro. But they are understood to be public access. And I don't think anybody of the Castro, a lot of heritage would try to re, recoup.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
But, but, but the city has the need and the right to do what they need to do within the bounds of that, of that strip of land in order to provide utilities and access to all the citizens.
And that, that's applicable to all the original roadways that would have been part of the Henry Castro colony, right?
So it's basically everything inside the horseshoe, west of the river? Yeah, it's basically everything-
Almost. I think there have been a couple of new blocks that have been formed that weren't probably as short, but not very many.
Up to-
And then something else we need to point out-
Is where I'm thinking, Paul. Towards the park. Are regional parks are all those original?
Yeah, those are all original.
Because I was told that that used to be a bunch of fields.
The park did, but-
But not that area.
The entire city used to be a bunch of fields because there were streets that were laid out back in the eighteen forties. The streets were laid out. That's why we have paper streets because they're on paper. It was put down on paper. They were dedicated on paper.
Well, the original settlers settled near the water, along the river. And I was told that until in the nineteen sixties even, most of the central part of Castroville was, was a cow pasture. All the streets weren't built, so.
I can't imagine why we have flooding issues.
Well, and that brings up a, a good point regarding, you know, drainage. A lot of people don't realize when we're going around and clearing out the ditches or beside the street, that they're like, oh, my yard, that's within the city easement. We're doing this to fix the drainage problem.
Right.
So, because I don't, I know we had some people come out to the contractors and everything, why are you digging up my yard?
So we are.
Yeah, so we-
We do that-
It's your grass, but it's our right of way.
All right. Anything else on the side of?
So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what the bounds were. So I, because we had a couple of them that came up that were like this. There was a sprinkler system. There was a connection to a driveway. There was another one that I heard this morning where, where we had peeled off the top layer to rebuild the street. It was in front of somebody's house that is accustomed to parking there. And he wanted us to go and improve the section that we had torn up because that's where he parked. And so each one of these issues are, they're private issues on public space. And so my, my direction really has been just generally, don't. Don't do improvements on, well, because then where do you stop doing it?
And I, I, to be fair, this is not an issue on this side of the river. But like in Country Village, every person who bought an empty lot was required to build a sidewalk on the city's right of way as part of buying. So the only spots where there aren't sidewalks are empty lots. But like, if the city came and tore up the sidewalk that the person before me was required to build, I would expect them to replace it. And similarly, I really feel for someone who like the end of their driveway gets torn up. Because like if the road is ten feet away from the edge of my property, I, I have to get there. And mailboxes too, come to mind.
Okay.
There's just a few things that like are, are a little less optional than flower beds or a parking space.
We generally, just so you know, we generally reestablish as part of the project. We consider part of expense to reestablish mailboxes and that kind of stuff.
And if you have to cut off the road at the driveways, you might put it down, you have your reattachment to the driveway. Issue there is.
Yeah.
Well, so the, the question came up and so I wanted to put it out in front of council because I didn't want it to be, you know, the Darren Show and, or differences of opinion between us. So the general direction, it sounds like, is that it is generally not our practice to reconnect something that has happened in that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, to, to kind of summarize point, the, when, when you're going to tear up a point of entry, a driveway, then I would imagine that we are responsible to repair that. But in the old part of the city, for many, many years, builders were told, don't pave from your property line to the street. Because we're trying to maintain some semblance of drainage through there. So, and there are now many people who have paved across that pathway between the pavement and the property line and have caused drainage issues. So that, that's part of the, part of the problem we have is that people have developed those driveways, leveled them and stopped the drainage across the front of their lots and the neighbors' ones and so on, so. It's a different, it's a different animal in different parts of the city.
All right. Anything further on that? All right. We're going to move to public comments and discussion on solar buyback rates. I just want to make sure that people had a chance to come, but nobody came. Thank you for coming. All right. And Scott, I'd ask you to put together a few things on this one. Did you, were you able to get those?
What you have in the package is what I prepared. So I wanted to pull this out for you. I felt like after, I know Mayor, he'd asked a couple of things, but when I, once I reread the letter that went out, I felt like the letter really addressed those issues pretty successfully. And we can talk around what's in here.
I didn't get that.
I've got this up.
All right, it's at the very, very end.
No, mine didn't.
Why is your finger?
No. I didn't put it in there.
Paul, Paul sharing with you.
Yeah, she actually didn't have her package.
So this is a letter, so this is the, I don't know, the, the Genesaver form?
Okay. Do you want to summarize that for the people that don't have a package?
I'll, I'll, I'm going to read it. It's easier for me to get it. In the latter part of 2022, while working on a billing project with the city's utility billing software provider, staff was made aware of an error in the calculation of the solar buyback rate. We discovered the city had been giving utility customers full credit. The adopted light rate for each kilowatt hour we purchased that we paid to the customers, we should have been paying our avoided costs, which is a much lower rate. Subsequent to this revelation, staff sent the letter included with this package to the twenty-three households that are in the program. Displayed both the discrepancy and the avoided cost. Our current avoided cost rate is point zero four eight two. So this letter, we'll see if it is. Our avoided cost rate prior to July one, twenty twenty-three was point oh three seven. So I said May, for probably May, June, next year is when we start looking at the rate again. Because it looks like we changed it in July of this year. And we'll probably do the same thing next year. Our avoided cost prior to July one, twenty twenty-three was point oh three seven six five three. So slightly higher, a little, a little. The policy that dictates the avoided cost was adopted in 2015 and is available in our utility policies that are posted online. There are no references to this rate or the city's methodology. The city's solar buyback effect rate is consistent with industry standards, the majority of which rely on an avoided cost buyback model. And then this is a letter that went out. Would you like to also read this or not?
Yeah, that's what I was-
And that went out in May, right?
Right.
This was, yes.
May eighteen.
Eighteenth.
Okay, so when we talked again, as we were talking about this, my concern originally was that it sounded like we had gone for the buyback rate at a much lower rate. When we were talking about it, you were saying-
Yeah, I was, I was recalling a conversation I had with someone else. And that's what I'm saying, when I read this letter, I was like, oh, okay. Yeah, I thought it was a penny and a half. No, no, no. We actually went up on our buyback rate. But, but from a, from a customer's perspective, they were getting eleven cents or whatever our rate was per kilowatt hour. That's a lot. I mean, that was enough to offset their entire bill. Well, now they're getting a third of that cost. And I understand the consternation, the concern, but the bottom line is, we were doing it wrong for years. And we caught that mistake when we updated our billing software. And we're now making people aware, this is what we should have been doing all along. And part of that goes back to, this is the comment that I stopped y'all from just having earlier. Gina, you were talking about the, the cost of generation. To your point, if we wrote everybody a check and said, well, you'll, we'll just give them a full eleven cents. Could we afford to do it? Absolutely. You could afford to do that. Would it be right? No. Because they, as much as anybody else, still share in the cost of delivering that power. When there's an outage, they have the outage just like us. Unless they have, they have batteries and they're, they're able to use their solar, that's them, that's great. But we still have to deal with the distribution system. When that power kicks back on and they want to have it, we've got to maintain that. So they, they have a shared cost in that. And that's why systems give the avoided power, the avoided cost rate. They don't get, you know, they don't give the eleven cents or, or, you know, some delta between us.
To be clear, I wasn't- To be clear, I wasn't trying to say that they should get the full, the full price, just that the, the effect they had on the discussion of setting rates.
Twenty-three customers, so, and you're talking about the difference, difference in cost, the, I don't know, it's not, to add up all those dollars on a monthly basis and multiply by twelve, it's not automatic.
So the reason that I wanted you to look into that is because I didn't want to make any assumptions on, um, what was given. Because there was a misunderstanding, I want to make sure that I knew what we were giving to customers. I wanted to make sure that we weren't making any promises of full reimbursement. So based on, um, what you see up there, uh, was there additional confusion on, um, the buyback rate?
You said people giving us back.
Oh, actually, do you mind, uh, since we're having a conversation for the record, uh, just state your name and your address?
Michelle Scott. And, and what else?
Address.
Two one 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 Geneva Court. So, I'm on, make sure I understand correctly. You said that you were paying us every month for what we, what we used with the, um, with the solar panels?
So.
No, it's not what you use, it's, it's whatever you put back into the system. So we, you're, go ahead, were you gonna answer this?
Yeah, let me, uh, I, I can handle this. So, um, when, when we sell power as a city, as a utility, we purchase that power wholesale. It used to be from CPS, now it's from LCPA. But they provide all the way up until our connection points. At our connection points, we own all of the wires, all of the poles, all of the transformers, all of that to actually distribute it to the entire city. So part of the electrical cost, we take that cost, we take the cost of running that system, and that's what is charged per kilowatt hour for each one of the customers.
So the, the power that, that I sent, that my solar panels sent to the city, that was so much of money came back for all of that?
The way.
Is that what you're saying?
What?
Like so many cents?
The way that it is structured in the ordinance, which is appropriate, is you don't get back the entire, um, say it's, I think we're like twelve cents a kilowatt hour or something around there. Uh, so you wouldn't get the full twelve cents per kilowatt hour. You would get, uh, basically the cost of providing the power, which is close to our, our wholesale rate, um, but not necessarily the entire wholesale rate because there are other costs that are involved in that. So it basically takes out, we still hold on to the cost of maintaining the system. Because when you put it back onto the grid, it's still going back onto the system that we're maintaining. And so the, the amount that you're getting reimbursed is the cost avoidance of us not buying it from our wholesale provider.
Okay.
And again, if you don't mind, just state your name and address, uh, so that we have it for the record.
Hi, Dave.
Dave Brown, eleven one oh nine, uh, River Trail. That's right, right? Okay.
Yes.
All right. We're neighbors. Okay, um, I think what the confusion is, is we don't, there, there, even when this letter came out in May, okay, um, if we go back to May on the billing, and this is the billings that we get, um, the city, um, there was no reimbursement done on the solar from May all the way down until, um, yeah, was this, uh, let's see, May, June, July, August, September. And then in October, it was eight dollars. And then nothing in November, December, January, it was a dollar thirty. What I'm saying is, is that we used to be charged, and, and I understand the rate went up, okay, but it went from forty-four cents per kilowatt hour down, um, four, point zero four four, okay? And then it went up seventy-nine percent, um, just this last year, which is what you show up here, uh, for the rate increases. However, the buyback rate, even after that, even though there was months that nothing was ever done, okay, then the buyback rate started to change monthly. And, uh, for example, um.
The buyback rate did, or the amount that you were getting back?
Well, okay, so what you do is if you take what you use, what is produced, you do the net, and then that's what you have overproduced, um, that goes back into the grid. Okay? That is what the city credits you back for. And you're right, net to net is not a good deal for the city at all, okay? Um, I wouldn't expect on our panels to get paid what you pay, or, I'm sorry, what you bill.
Right.
Okay, because there is the maintenance issue for the lines because our, my solar only lasts maybe, you know, eighteen hours a day. What am I doing the other, you know, six? Well, I need power, okay? So I am responsible also for the lines. All I'm saying is that as the credits were changing, um, I was paying, um, okay, the, the, the normal rate, but the buyback rate, uh, dropped down to, uh, point zero three eight when I'm being charged one point something. That's not fair. In other words, you're buying back my power, selling it back to other customers at full cost, and yet giving me less than what your wholesale cost is. And I'm, I'm just saying that if, um, you know, like, uh, Scott was saying, if we're gonna fairness and all, okay, I think there should be the buyback, what you pay plus, we should pay for the maintenance, you know, a certain percentage for the maintenance of the lines and, and everything else in order to, um, to get to the right compensation amount. And I realize that rates fluctuate, well, then so should the buyback rate as a wholesaler, you know, as you're putting in the system. Plus, I gotta pay whatever the maintenance cost is for the lines, um, because it's still available to the house. So it's, it's basically, everything is like, do you get paid? Do you get reimbursed? No. I mean, there was eight months, nothing. And then all of a sudden, a little bit, and then all of a sudden, nothing, then you're going, why? When the net, okay, is showing the overproducing to the city? So why isn't there a reimbursement?
I asked the mayor if I could talk about this. They're both, I think the very first person who's had a solar system was Pat McAlister. And that's when, and I was on city council at the time, and, and Pat had some of the same questions also, and so I was involved in that discussion. And the simplest thing, when it all of a sudden, the light bulb went off for me, is the city is reimbursing you for the electricity, for your excess electricity. They're buying it from you for the same cost that they buy from now LCPA. So the same cost that we buy from LCPA is what we buy it from you for.
Correct.
But.
It's actually not.
Yeah, it's similar, it's close. It can't be the exact number, but it's close.
Right.
But, and the reason is, is that we buy it from LCPA, but then this infrastructure that, that we have to have to pay for all of this, uh, to maintain it, that's that difference. You know, you can, this is what you buy.
No, I, I agree. There should be an add, there should be, there should be an, an add to that for the maintenance and everything else. I agree.
And what they're doing is, the easiest way to look at it is what they are reimbursing you for the cost of electricity because we're buying it from you for the same, virtually the same cost.
And that's why it's called the avoided cost.
Yeah.
Because it's literally the avoided cost. If you hadn't given us that power, is what we estimate the cost would have been for us to get that power.
Right, right. I, I mean, I understand that, and I agree with the maintenance and the upkeep, you know, that I should pay, you know, for that, whatever that percentage is, that should be, you know, deducted from the buyback and all that kind of stuff. What I'm trying to say is that it's inconsistent in that there's some months, even if I overproduce five hundred and ninety-one units, okay, I got zero reimbursement. Now that's the plus part, okay? So that happens more often than not, that all of a sudden you go, well, you overproduce, but there's no credit of any kind. And then all of a sudden, you still overproduce, okay? So net was six hundred and six and six, and you get back a dollar thirty-nine.
How do we?
That is not.
How do we read?
There's a bill calculation in here. So this is, this is where I'm.
It's not consistent on.
It's not, it's not.
Well, your bill, could you show that to, to Scott and then he could probably pick it very quickly?
Probably not, but I'll look at it.
So where do we, where do we determine the solar production by customer?
What's that?
Where do we, uh, the solar produced by customer, is that measured through our meter?
Yes, so they have a solar meter. So the, the twenty-three customers have a different meter than you and I have. Because they have a solar meter that, that measures how much electricity they get from us and how much electricity they produce.
Okay. And so.
So the meter actually changes. If you look at it, it'll say, this is what you're getting from the city, this is what your panels are producing, this is how much you're actually using. Because the solar panels produce and the, so sometimes it'll be.
So you're reading this off of, my, my question was, are you reading this off of the city's meter? Where you're determining that, that amount of production?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just haven't seen it.
Yeah, there's, some houses have two meters, okay? Mine was, when mine was put in CPS, uh, and we, and it's actually a reversible meter. So there's only one meter that controls both the solar and the income and the cutoff.
So you're saying you're not getting any kind of bill credit when you produce, when you overproduce?
Right. That's what that.
It's not consistent.
And that's what I'm saying as far as inconsistency.
Right.
Um, in that it would be nice just to know, okay, this is what it is. And I know we're going through the infrastructure change as far as putting in all the smart meters that's gonna be controlled up, you know, from the web or sky or somewhere. But even now, there should still be some kind of consistency as far as the solar.
Did you, uh, did you call the billing department about, uh, the fact that you weren't getting, if you were showing that you were getting produced?
The billing department, yeah.
And you contacted the billing department? And what did they say?
They don't, the office here, they don't know.
All right.
I mean, it's just, I don't mind as long as, if it's a consistent.
Yeah, absolutely. Deborah, you have something?
No, I remember, uh, Mr. King, Councilor King may remember also, well, no, uh, originally when this was started, it was supposed to be once a year, that there was to be a reimbursement.
No, just right.
At, or, yes, if there was something overproduced, we were supposed to look at it and at the end of the year, whatever it was, uh, that was when the, uh, a check would be, uh, paid to the customer. But you're saying that you're doing this monthly now possibly?
Yes, they said that, uh, that it was supposed to be done, um, as you get your bill because the meter itself is not saying how much this cost is, how much this is producing, and what the net is and how much.
I showed you originally when the council voted on it, it was once a year.
So I wanted to make sure that we were clear on the policies. I think that the, the, the resolution of this is working with city staff to figure out if there's another issue. I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to talk about, uh, what is being told to new solar customers, making sure that we are following up on that.
Yeah, they didn't, it was one of those, we're going through change and, and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And, and. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Wouldn't this be a reasonable topic to ask the city auditors to add into the audit? Every year when they audit us, could they not look at the solar program?
We don't look at, uh, utility billing in the audit. Uh, it's a financial audit, it's not a, uh, another audit. But I think that it's something that, we only have that many customers, it's something that, I mean, I know that Patricia keeps on top of that. She monitors.
What we're looking for is, are we compliant with normal city operations? That's really the question we need the auditor to confirm.
Let's find out. So, Scott, if I can just interrupt for a moment, I think that. So what, what I'd like to do, if you're okay with it, I, I wanted to make sure that we talked about the policies.
Yeah.
And what, uh, what we're doing, why we're doing it. It sounds like from here, there are some, some, just some billing issues you've got to go through. So if it's all right, I'd like to have that taken offline outside of the council meeting and have you work with our city staff. Uh, and if there's something anomalous going on where you're not getting reimbursed for it, we need to make sure that we've identified that.
Well, the amount, see, that's.
Yeah.
That's where, where I get confused. When I pay a dollar thirty-eight and I get credit for thirty-eight cents, okay, I don't think there's a dollar, you know, per kilowatt hour difference for the maintenance part. I, I mean.
Well, the, so the, I will tell you that the, uh, the rate that's on here, that we've got, our current avoided cost rate is, uh, almost five cents a kilowatt hour.
Right.
Which is incredibly generous. So I, when I heard that it was potentially less than two cents a kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
Totally inappropriate. But at almost five cents a kilowatt hour, that is, um, that is very generous. It is very much in line with what I would expect.
Yeah, that would, but like I had told you before, I was down to twenty-eight cents, you know, or two point eight. And it's like, wait, you know, I mean.
Well, the rate should never change. The rate.
It shouldn't.
Right. And so that's, that's why I'm saying, I think it's a billing issue.
We have some billing sets to resolve. I need to make sure we're looking at this.
So I, I, I have a question, just to make sure I've understood this correctly. If a house consumed five hundred and also generated five hundred, should it, the bill be fifteen dollars, the base rate, or should it be fifteen dollars plus two-thirds of what we normally charge for five hundred?
Basically, whatever they generate that they don't consume, like it generates more during the daytime than they may consume. So whatever additional is generated from their system that goes back onto our grid, that's what they get reimbursed on.
That's at the end of the year. It's one, it's a month.
But what I'm asking is like, if, if net zero, do they pay fifteen dollars, the base rate, or does it always calculate separately?
Normally it's, you, you pay a base rate. The city has told me, this is what you gotta pay just because we're hooking your house. Okay? Now, um, on top of that, there's also what we had said before about, uh, when you generate, I should also pay for, you know, the maintenance and the upkeep and all the rest of that stuff. Because it should be, if you, if you credited that to me for what I gave you fifty cents and it cost you fifty cents, you're losing. Okay? You should credit me back forty-five cents because you're gonna need five cents to maintain the lines, you know, let's say, and the telephone poles, transformers, storms, power outages, you know, all that other kind of stuff. The base rate is the base rate, everybody pays that just to have it hooked to your house.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm just saying the buyback is gonna be less than what the wholesale would be because I still have to pay for maintenance and it won't show that way anywhere.
I, I understand the mentality, I'm just, I'm trying to read this and I'm confused. Like if, if I'm net zero, is my bill gonna be fifteen dollars or more than fifteen dollars? Based on what we played out here?
Oh, oh, right now, fifteen. It would be fifteen.
I'm asking that.
I believe it's fifteen. I'll, I'll get you that answer.
Because that doesn't.
I'll confirm that.
It seems like the answer here is different than that. It seems like I'm gonna have to pay money if I nets, like more than fifteen dollars if I net zero, based on what's here.
You will owe more because you're still paying, I mean, if you look, just look at the budget with utility sales at seven point five million dollars and, uh, the cost of running it is three million dollars? That's, you know, there's that, the additional.
If you, I'm sorry, if you produce the same kilowatts that you used, if you net zero that way, you're gonna pay.
But if I.
We're gonna pay because you're paying for the system.
On Tuesday, I used five hundred, and if on Wednesday I gave, I produced five hundred extra, and that's everything.
You're gonna pay because the five hundred you used cost you eleven cents. The five hundred you gave back, you only got a nickel.
Okay, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, where, where we need to do a fairness evaluation on that somewhere and have it consistent.
That's, that extra charge is essentially to borrow the electricity.
I think the fairness has been addressed personally. But if you're seeing fluctuation.
Yeah.
And you're not seeing credits, we need, I need, we need to look at that and understand why that happened, if, if it indeed happened that way, because that's not right. That's not the way it's supposed to work. It should be a consistent rate all year, right? We establish that rate once a year, and the rest of the year, that's your buyback rate. So that should be consistent. And the credits should be consistent, consistently applied. So I need to look into making sure that that was the case, and to the degree it wasn't, we will, we will fix that.
Okay.
So I think.
Okay, and then the other thing was just that buyback rate that I think the council ought to look at.
The buyback, based on what I know about what we pay for power, the buyback rate at the almost five cents a kilowatt hour is generous.
Is what it is now?
It is generous, yeah.
No, if that's what it is, then.
That's what it should be.
Because I'm, I'm down to, well, last month it was twenty-eight.
Again, the rate, the rate should always be the same. The rate should be, what, what do we have listed here, point?
Point zero four eight two.
Yeah, that's.
For a kilowatt hour, right. The rate should be the same, the amount may be different.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I need to look at.
So, I think that.
If that's what's happening?
Yeah, it should be steady across, no, with no.
Yeah, I mean, I get the letter and that's okay. I mean, I understand the fairness aspect of that, I do, okay, and I don't mind that at all.
It's the consistent.
But it's the consistency, when you're doing this, you go, well, I don't know.
So, it seems like we may have a billing issue here. And the, I, I think the takeaways here are, I would encourage other people who are listening or who may go back and listen to the recording here, always get in touch with the city. When you see something wrong in your bill, contact the city. Systems are really good, but they're not perfect. It sounds like you already did that and we weren't able to give them an answer. And so, I would say on the staff's side, it's probably good to make sure that we are capturing some of the, some of these things and just do a little bit more digging into them.
We do, I'm just going to, I, I don't know, y'all, you're saying you reached out to Patricia and you didn't get an answer?
Right, well, the guy came, the guy came out of the back, she brought out.
Lee Rick?
No.
No?
It would have been over at Public Works.
Yeah.
John, Rick, can you?
I can't even. Anyway, and it was like, you know, we'll get to it when we get to it, kind of thing.
I, I absolutely.
I want to be positive.
So, I'll break down the bill and show you, here's where your credit is. So, I will, I'll do that with you and make sure that happens.
And I want to make sure that I caveat that with, before I was on council, before I was doing any kind of public service aside from just volunteer work, Patricia had reached out to me one, one month, she's like, Mr. Schroeder, your, your bill is way out of line. I think you might have a leak or something going on. And like, she's proactive and that's something that I commend our staff for doing is being that very proactive. I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything.
I don't get down here that much. Because I never have really any problems or anything else, it's just, this is finally kind of, finally kind of got to me.
Great, so let's work with staff and get that, are, are we, are we good with the policy, the rates, as long as you're being consistently reimbursed according to the agreement?
Yeah, I mean, just so you know, you get, okay, the reason why we put in solar, I'm seventy-one, I would like.
Much older than your sister.
Oh, no, she's older. It, so, we do this sometimes to try to stabilize our monthly income because our income is fixed, period. It's not going anywhere. And so, like, I have to go back to work in order to try to make up some of the differences. But this is why the solar thing, put back at grid, you know, level out the electric bill and all that kind of stuff. Especially when it's a hundred and twenty all the time.
Fourteen thousand degrees outside?
Yeah.
This is kind of tough summer. I know, it's expensive. Well, great, thank you for coming down and let's follow up on.
Thank you for.
And you're welcome for not leaving it to the very, very end.
Oh, no.
We still have more time. And I, you know, I, I say that kind of tongue in cheek, but I want to make sure that people realize that nobody on council takes this lightly. We all take this very, very seriously. Staff takes this really, really seriously. We do this twice a month at least. We get in here and we try and figure out, what are the problems, how do we fix them?
We talk all the time.
We do, I mainly bitch, okay? I'm the old guy on the street that just has to bitch. But it's, it's not meant personally.
Oh, no.
I try to understand, you know?
I'm glad you guys are, you know, come to me and.
Yeah.
And that's the right thing to do is.
And then we had a meeting with Daryl too, I mean, and, or Darren, and he.
Down the street, yeah. Yeah, I got back brief, I got back brief, yeah.
I got that one too.
Yeah.
And the only reason that she wasn't there was because we would have had a quorum. But she shows up to this stuff.
If you have more than, if you have three or more, it's considered a quorum.
We have limits on how many of us can be in the same place.
At the same time?
Because of Texas rules.
Disgusting.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
All right, we're going to move on, thank you for coming down.
Thank you. No, you're fine, you're fine, Michelle.
All right, great, thanks. Time to hang out with us more council meetings, it'll be fun.
See y'all later.
Causes a time distortion and suddenly hours can pass with nothing getting done.
All right, so, next item. Thank you for your patience, what's that? Yep, number thirteen, consider and take appropriate action on approving a contract for professional services with Simple City for the development of a unified development ordinance. And we have Scott to explain this.
All right, well, hi, Brianna. You've waited all night. I'll just say this, you will see, you know, again, I'm glad you're sitting down, you'll see that the proposal is considerably more than what we, we talked about just at the last meeting, right? Part of that is, as the committee met with the Simple City, we looked at what all we could try to accomplish and how we could tie those things together. And one of the things we looked at specifically was the downtown master plan. And including that as a project deliverable in this project. But we also looked at the update to the master plan. You know, every group that came, pretty much every group that came before us identified the fact that we need to update our, our master plan. If for no other reason than it hasn't been updated for at least five years. And it's supposed to be updated once every five years. Now, I'll be honest, I didn't know that. I've worked in a lot of small towns in Texas and I, I've said this before, you know, I kind of, in part, I kind of operate because, you know, where's the big black SUV that's going to carry us all off to jail if we don't do this thing, right? There's a lot of unfunded mandates that are also unenforced, right? And very difficult to enforce on communities that have limited funds. So, I wasn't aware that we had to do it every five years. I know it's a good practice, right? But, but we do, yeah, it's law, you're supposed to do it every five years. Now, how many cities are doing it, I don't know. But bottom line, this city hasn't done that and it's, and it's caught up with us, especially in this planning effort where some of the city's desires and goals have really kind of changed considerably from the last major planning efforts occurred. So, this proposal, for those reasons, majority of, majorly, that's not right, anyway. For those reasons, it is considerably more because we asked them to give us more deliverables. Now, you're probably also asking, and I addressed this in David's Q and A, you know, well, okay, well, where are we going to get that money? Well, again, by clearing the downtown master plan, that was part of this, this kind of concept was, we already budgeted two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand or two-hundred-and-fifty for, for the downtown master plan. And we budgeted two-twenty-five or two-fifty, whatever the other number was, for the UDO effort. So, combined, we have four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that was planned for in the adopted CIP for these two planning efforts. Now, the planning, the downtown master plan section of this isn't that amount of money. It's about seventy-five thousand of what he calculated, that portion of the plan to be. And part of that is, because we're also doing the comp plan, we're also doing the other things, so you try to be reasonable in those rates. I, as staff, can tell you from a funding standpoint, from a cost standpoint, although this is a considerable sum of money, if we were to undertake to do each of these programs individually, we would be suspending even, spending substantially more, even more than what we budgeted. My budgets were just that and the CIP and they were not accurate. We found that out when we went out for the RFP. We knew that just to do the UDO was going to be more than what I budgeted. I budgeted two-twenty-five or whatever it was, we weren't going to be able to do it for that. I'm very confident that we went out for a downtown master plan, we'd be in the exact same boat. And, and certainly we can look at and go to the other cities and what they spent. So, I, I know that was a concern or should be a concern of yours is, well, how am I going to pay for this? And I just want to make sure you're clear, the funding is in the CIP for both these efforts, if you look at it as a combined effort, which is what our intent is. I do like the proposal itself, when you read it and you listen to, boss is the wrong word. Fearless leader maybe, maybe? Matt, Matt Lewis talked about it, he sounds like a, a Southern Baptist creature out of nowhere. All but begging to gab all the things he's going to do. But the, the case he's making for what he'll be able to get to the city and put us in this position, he really, 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 not just wants to visit, he really wants to be able to deliver something. One, that he can proud of, but two, that puts us in the best possible situation for success, whether it's the UDO or our transportation planning or our downtown master plan or other aspects that we're trying to consider as part of this effort. So, I really feel, I feel a hundred times better than I did going into this whole UDO process, frankly, about where we are today versus where we started. That's my presentation.
Part of this, as I, because I went through this and I'm like, where can we cut out costs? Where can we get rid of some of the scope? And a lot of the costs, a lot of the cost isn't just in the actual development, but it is in the community involvement. And that is something we can't, we can't shortcut that. The way that they interact with the community, engaging the community, making sure that this is something that everybody in the community has visibility into, has input into, all of the public meetings that have to go into that and having them manage that process. And then out of that, producing the output from it, I don't see any way that we can avoid doing something like that. So, even as we dug through it to find things that we could cut out, I think they went into it pretty lean. I think that if we went out and did these separately, I think that you're looking at probably another twenty percent. So, questions, comments? I'll start over with District One this time.
I fail to recognize Zach Lewis, but Zach Lewis is up at the city, he's here, handsome gentleman in the back behind the camera. And Brianna is also here, should you have any specific questions? She's really grateful that you moved it to the very end of the meeting. I'm so sorry. When's your birthday again? You might get a really special present.
Am I going to get a lump of coal in my stocking?
So, I, I love the, the whole concept and everything, the presentation. So, a couple of questions, is Phase One, Steering Committee? Do we have, like, how would we choose people to be on Steering Committee? We just ask for volunteers? How would that be? Yeah, we go through a process of picking both community members and staff members. It's going to be more of a staff and.
Yeah, actually, will you come up to the microphone so that?
Zach Lewis, no, I'm just kidding.
I think the microphone is under by the camera as well.
Zach Lewis, Simple City.
H, not K, right?
Yeah, right?
Zach, C-A-C-Z-A-Z.
C-H, yeah. Yeah, but that will be determined with, kind of in our project overview with council and the committee on how much of the commit, how much of the community do we want to involve in the Steering Committee? Where do we want to pull from? Where are the community sources that y'all have? Because we don't know your talent to that extent and that's part of that first process of finding who are the leaders that we need to be putting at the decision table.
That's about it. I mean, the, the mayor asked, asked, answered one of Mike's concerns when I talked to him the other day because it said budgeted, but it didn't say where it was coming from and everything and so, like, he answered that question. But I, but I love the idea, we need this UDO. I'm used to doing five-year master plans because it was required by the military that we do it for not only each unit, but for the base also. So, the importance of it is great because if we go for grants or something like that, they love to see a, a master plan. And based off that master plan, they can see that we have a path to leave the city, a place forward. So, they're, when you go for grants, they're more apt to, hey, they got a plan. It's not just up, you're flucking out of the air, say, let's do this. So, so this would be fabulous, especially with developments and everything. It'll make, make the city go into the future greatly.
And the way that we have it structured is, all of these will inform each other and reinforce each other. So, by the time that this is completed, it's not a master plan and then wonder what's next. It's a master plan that sees the full process and results of what could be created. So, there's not a question of what comes next, there's a clear direction and example to pull from. And furthermore, on the, on the cost savings portion, all three of these would have had to have the same level of community engagement. Each project would have had to have an independent process. And by putting them all together, in the way that we're flowing through this engagement process, we're walking them through each stage of it of, okay, let's imagine, let's talk about the comprehensive plan. Okay, let's get more into the meat, let's talk about the downtown master plan, let's talk about the UDO. And just take them along that process, by the time they get to the end of it, they're seeing a downtown master plan and code as a result.
Yeah, because there's no gray area, we know a gray area creates, so, thank you very much.
I, I started pursuing this chair seven years ago, a little over seven years ago, with the primary goal of addressing our UDO. Because I, I felt that the city was well on its way to duplicating San Antonio. And if we wanted to be part of San Antonio, we should let man access. The, the, the process, the visions process that we went through, the speakers that we had and the, the ideas that were presented, real, I think, distilled what Casterville is and where we need to take it. And, you know, if we're not going to step forward and, and, and take the next step, then we might as well just go back to where we were. I'm very grateful that you're here and fully supportive of what we have, of what I've examined in your, in your program and your plans. Thank you.
Councilor King?
Yeah, as we talked last time, I have, I'm very comfortable, you're the forum that can help us on this. I know all of your staff, they're very comfortable in the forum. So, that's, you know, the cost is a little bit important, but we're going in a comp plan. And this should have been, again, so twenty-five thousand dollars more for a comp plan, that's, that's a steal. And I know that's one, one way to look at it, that's not, but all in all, at the end of the day, this is going to cost us a lot less than what individually. And, and we can't get around it, we need a comp plan to be practical, but we also need from legal standpoint. So, I'm comfortable with your price, I'm comfortable with you as well, I'm more just kind of all says, let's get down the road.
And I'm, I'm going to throw in a couple of comments and I'll move on to you, just going down the line. First of all, the, the right team, you guys have done this for Taylor, for Bastrop, for Bandera, for a bunch of small Texas towns that have historic elements that are very similar in nature, although not informed, but in nature of what they are and what they want to continue to be. And I've talked to the mayors of two of those cities and the planning, the head of planning for the other city. And the results, that, the ones that have had it in place, the ones that, what they're seeing is that their town is now getting built as their town. It's no longer getting built as suburbia, as anywhere USA. And there are small nuanced changes. So, the fact that you have that amount of experience in towns that are, are similar in nature to, to Casterville means a lot. I think that us going through this process now is incredibly important. As I talk to, because I talked to our developers, the people that are coming in and building the, the neighborhoods out, and their greatest source of frustration that I've heard from them, and I'm sure that Brianna can attest to this, is that they don't know, we say, we want you to do something that's special and they're like, what is that? What does that mean? Can you define it? And so, I think that there's been a lot of consternation from the developers. They're like, we just don't, we don't feel like you know what you want. Even talking to our amazing precinct two county commissioner, he's like, you guys, so Larry Sider is on it with development, he's trying to make sure that they're doing the right thing, he's like, you guys make it too difficult. And it's because we're doing all of these one-offs and trying to do all of this. And so, this makes it very clear for the developers, it makes it very clear for anybody that wants to come in and do business in Casterville, what we expect from them. Because otherwise, they will come in, they'll make their money, they'll rape the citizens and, and move on. So, this helps protect against that. So, I'm, I'm grateful for the timing.
And we're seeing in, with, actually Bandera, we had an instance with our code where there were some discrepancies or confusions about it and it was actually the comp plan that helped inform those questions. So, it's, these are not just a vision statement, this is a legal administrative document that is further providing support and backing for what it is y'all want to carry out.
Great.
I have a few questions, although I think one of them is kind of aimed more at the people on the bench here. So, we're going to get the comprehensive plan, the UDO and downtown master plan. I had asked in my questions to Mr. Dixon that I thought we, I thought that part of your guys' bid was doing the thoroughfare planning. And you said, no, that's going to be done with a tax stock grant hopefully. But now I'm twice as confused because I thought that was the transportation planning, which is everything but the streets.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, what they're going to help us do is to design, design.
So what they're going to help us do is to design, design what, what is our, so new residential developments go on. What do those streets look like? How do they interact with each other? Do we have traffic circles? Do we not have traffic circles? Where are the sidewalks? How wide are the sidewalks? What do the sidewalks look like? What are they composed of? So there are transportation elements that this will address and help us identify. The thoroughfare master plan, we are supposed to be pigging back on, piggybacking on the county's thoroughfare plan, number one. That's number one. We have an interlocal agreement that says we're going to do that. But that has been shaken out. That's, so honestly, thoroughfare plan should be part of what the county is doing, inclusive of Casterville. Secondarily to that is we are going to get a planning grant for, well, we certainly hope we're going to be successful in getting playground, text slot, to look at multi-mobile access along 90 specifically. That is not a thoroughfare plan, that's, that's nine, right? But, you know, one of the things we had a conversation with Quiddity all along about was, but we need thoroughfare planning as well. And so the grant is going to pay for what it's going to pay for. And we would likely expand that scope to include that effort. But because it's, we're doing, we'd be able to do it as one project.
And part of what Simple City will put together for us in this U D O is they'll talk about street types and street sizes and forms and how they fit together. So this, I feel, will instruct our thoroughfare master plan as we work that out because it's got to be aligned with the county.
Now, there's other elements that there, I'm sorry, there's other ones that are addressed that will also inform the thoroughfare plan. So for instance, when we talk about block widths and access, you know, that we don't want a bunch of cul-de-sacs and we want multiple access, all of that actually, when you start to put them on paper, that is a thoroughfare plan. Thoroughfare plans are gridded or they're, whatever they are. So some of those aesthetics, some of those things that we're going to talk about actually are going to be relied upon when developing that thoroughfare plan on sub-levels. So I do think there's going to be a lot of interplay, but, but I also want to be clear, because not all of us understand or know what a thoroughfare plan is, they are not doing a full-blown thoroughfare plan. That's a separate effort.
So we can't do the thoroughfare master plan without the coordination with the county because we're interacting with county leaders. We shouldn't do the thoroughfare master plan without understanding what the building blocks of that thoroughfare plan.
Well, to understand, I also want to remind you.
I'm just trying to keep track of, there's lots of names and I'm trying to keep track of which ones.
What it is, what it is.
Different ones were added or subtracted.
The other reason we're doing, we're leaning on the county for that effort. It may seem like, I forget, I have to remind myself, oh yeah, guess what? All of our expansion's in the county, technically. Until the annexed end, it's all in the county. So that's why we said, okay, you're doing your thoroughfare plan? Great. Guess what? 90% of our growth is in the county. And we would like you to consider that area as you're doing it. Because, you know, because for us to do a thoroughfare plan, we'd be spending a lot of our money, our taxpayer money, on an area that isn't ours, really.
May or may not be.
Right.
We ain't going to make any major thoroughfares in the city of Casterville.
Right, not in existing limits.
Not in existing.
We have one.
And we don't want another one.
More questions, comments?
The other one, character areas, blocks and buildings. I imagine this will draw on the DNA analysis you guys performed before. There are several existing areas such as River Bluff and Country Village, which I don't think were really looked at during those efforts. Will those be visited just to see, I guess, how this plan will work in those areas going forward?
So just to be sure, River Bluff and what was the second one? Are they the?
Country Village, so.
They're the newest developments.
Yes, to answer your question shortly. The reason in the DNA analysis that we focused only on historic Casterville because we were more trying to gather, like, we've seen these types of developments before. They're newer builds, we're familiar with them. We were trying to understand the DNA of historic Casterville. So even in that contract and the DNA analysis, that was what we focused on specifically. But yes, as part of the character areas and character districts, it is the whole city. And we're going to encompass all of the character elements that go within it.
And I think that focus during the DNA analysis was fitted. I just want to make sure that we're not going to write something and then go to Country Village and go.
Yeah, oops.
Well, River Bluff is built out, so I mean.
Yeah.
Not quite, there's a couple lots.
Eh, not much. That's up at the top of the hill. But I got two houses being built up in that area now.
There were a few items, there are a few things which were mentioned multiple times either during your, as part of your proposal or as someone else's, that I didn't find in here. And so I just want to, explicitly in here. And so I just want to see which of them, like, there was not a single mention of any, like, form-based code? With that.
That is the code, yeah. Yeah, our code is based off of form-based coding.
Okay. Any mention of like aspirational portions useful for development agreements? So like things that go beyond what Texas law allows us to require to things that we might use in return for.
Yeah, and that's what we had talked about in the development agreement. I'd imagine that would be encompassed under the comprehensive plan. Because under state law, we can only, like legally administer what's under state law for the code. But for both the downtown master plan and comprehensive plan, by design, that's, that's our, like, that's y'all's formal ability to say, this is what we want, this is what it looks like, this is how we'd like it to carry. You can be a lot more specific than even just a laundry list. But having like examples to pull from or just more context to pull from. So that will be baked into the comprehensive plan. And I'd imagine the downtown master plan as a, like, example of what you're trying to speak in the comprehensive plan.
And if you look at our previous comp plans, they, they do speak a lot to aspirational. I think some of them, they speak a little bit too much to aspirational and not enough on functional. But they are, they're a combination of both, for sure.
Okay. And then the last two, I have three more questions, but I'm pretty sure he's going to say one of them. So I'll leave it for him. Two items that really excited me about another proposal was architectural guidelines for the historic district that could be applied elsewhere. And then also like sample architectural plans in the vernacular style. I mentioned that those really excited me last time. And I think you had said that that could be something that we would negotiate, whether it was in this bid or not. I'm guessing it's not.
Yeah, under some of the fat trimming, a full pattern book, which we've done for Bastrop, it would be too much of a project to fit within the scope currently. But in terms of historic architectural standards, that would be baked into the, I think it's the historic ordinance or the historic section as part of the code that.
I think what he was saying is that there are some of the vernacular of the historic structures that could then inform new developers, new builders on how to incorporate some of that.
Well, to that answer, it would be, that's what we find out in developing the form. We have a standard template of the form-based code, but by design, it's supposed to be informed by the community. And what the community decides that form to look like. And I'm going to guess it's going to look very similar to a lot of the historic Casterville.
Existing historic structures.
Exactly. So, and it's great because it's an amazing vernacular to build from. And again, that would be baked into the comprehensive plan to inform that as well.
So I think that specifically on one of the questions, one of the things that was put out was pre-approved building plans?
Yes.
So I don't know that that was included in that, but, but part of what we're doing is.
I think that's what you said, the pattern book?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what we call them.
Would be the pattern book. But I think that also there are representative developments that we're going to take, basically do separate treads on individual projects. And so part of that can feed into that.
Yeah, so to explain that, or to expand on that, that is, in a sense, how the downtown master plan will play out. It's like a longer-term tread. And I believe, I mean, we're going to find out in more of the project scoping, or not scoping, of the actual laying out of the project. Specific parcels that we want to point out, areas that we want to get. But I believe it's included to have one or two additional items. And so, yeah, that's an opportunity to show the vernacular that you're talking about and say, this is what's capable in our code, this is what we want, this is what it can look like. Within, you know, a year, they're already building some of the stuff.
Okay. Anything else? Well, I think you're going to ask him about price.
Budget.
The budget, yeah. So I'll let you take that one.
Great, Councilman Dyke?
Okay, if I understand this right, you're asking for $500,000 to do Phase One of an unknown number of phases that could add up to $1.2 million. That's what we've said in previous meetings.
No, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
And we've only got $475,000?
I don't, the $1.2 million, I don't know where you're getting that. What are you talking about?
Well, it was brought up in previous meetings.
I don't remember that number.
That the U D O effort, this is just the beginning.
No, 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 no.
This is it.
This is it. This is the whole thing. There's not another phase. This is it. When we get done, we'll have all of the planning.
So this is Phase One of one?
Yes, for U D O.
So you're asking us to approve the entire project? We're $25,000 short, but you believe you can cover it with our bonds, our fees?
Our bond, yeah, we have, we have additional bond that we can use for this effort.
That's what I wanted to hear. So this is, this is, this is the one and only phase.
It's the three phases.
Because I know in previous meetings, I heard numbers as large as $1.2 million for the U D O effort to be completed. And it's, that's stuck in my head, but maybe I just dreamed it.
Maybe, it's a nightmare.
If that's what we're doing, if we're, if we're going to approve $500,000 for the whole project and we've got $475,000 approved in the budget, then I'll support it.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to go back for a last call. Is there anybody that thought of something while somebody else was talking that you wanted to talk about?
Phil Meek, last Thursday, I happened to go to a historic preservation meeting in Taylor.
Oh, in Meredith, was it?
Meredith?
Meredith, was that, yeah. Was that in Taylor? Where was that?
Well, it wasn't in Taylor, it was in east of Ram Rock or somewhere.
Georgetown?
Georgetown, no, no, somewhere. Anyway.
Very memorable city, you said, very memorable.
The, the city of Taylor gave a presentation on their effort. And just gushed with joy over working with you guys and the outcome and everything. So gave me a real sense of, and very, very, I don't know if you remember the lady's name, but I don't. But, but she was, yeah, very, very happy with what they've done. So that you get a further sense of, that we did, we made a right decision.
Okay, all right. Did I miss anything?
And on that note, may I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the contract for professional services with Simple City for the development of our unified development ordinance.
My second?
As, as presented.
Is it not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
$500,000.
$500,000.
Okay.
Is that my second?
All right, so I have a motion by Councilman Carey, a second by Councilman Mers. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Let's get to work. Go home.
Brianna? No final words?
Great. All right, thank you. All right, next item we have, staff reports?
Yes, we do.
They were very good.
Thank you. I think our staff, if you can't tell, they spend a lot of time, some more than others, trying to make these reports informative. Maybe not entertaining, but at least pleasant to look at and flip through. Oh, yeah.
But they have it.
Oh, they have it too. Yeah, there was, I think there was an email snafu because Darren Ham had sit, he, he, he was certain he had submitted his report and he, we didn't get it. So, oh, yeah. So that's in front of you. But I'll just, as I typically do, I don't, I don't have anything super important to talk about here other than to remind, National Night Out, that's next Tuesday. So important dates coming up. October 14th, that's the Solar Eclipse Watch Party at the Regional Park. They're doing a fundraiser in the morning, so you can, if you want to go get breakfast tacos or what have you, you can do that. I will be on a, on my way to a ship. I'll be getting on a ship that day. The 28th, I'll be at a wedding. But the 28th is the October trunk retreat at Regional Park. So 28th, they're looking for trunks. If you, if you know anybody who has a trunk that wants to participate. We had, wow, 4,000 kids last year. We had a ton of people come last year, very, very popular event. We invite people to participate in that. I think, oh gosh, I'm going to kill myself later, but I think that's the, kind of three or four major events I wanted to toss out. We obviously had the Alstation Language movie that, that hopefully, I don't know if all of you got to go or not, but that's pretty exciting that, that, that effort is culminating in a movie. And I'm sure there's a lot of very proud relatives that, you know, either got to participate or knows who one did. Yes? Oh, yeah, employee conference. That was something that's in my report. There's a couple, yeah, I didn't, I didn't have my report in front of me to flip through it earlier when we were, I had, I did. I didn't know it was there, because that way, she took care of me. But, but yeah, we're doing an employee conference in December. That's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. This is, we'll see how it goes. But this is the, I don't know of any other cities that do something quite on this scale. It is nice to be smaller and be able to do this. We'd already, typically we close for a Christmas luncheon, so that was, that was typical. But I'm expanding on that to do this, this training. And tomorrow morning, I'll have a staff meeting and talk to staff a little bit more about it to hype it up. But I can't say enough about Patty and Leroy and about their level of dedication to getting this done because they have done it single-handedly, like, got, really arranged it, helped get the speakers. They're preparing goodie bags and swag. It'll be, I really, really hope our employees get something out of it because there's a lot of effort being put in to make sure it's going to be a neat event. So that's happening, of course, also mentioned this Friday is the luncheon at the Saloon. And the mayor's going to be our host for the gathering. And then Respec and DRBZ, I don't know if anybody's going to come from a law firm. I need to reach out and see who y'all are sending. But they're both co-sponsoring the event, so Respec and our law firm are paying for lunch.
I'm going to lunch.
Yeah.
I'm doing dessert.
And she's thinking she's going to do dessert.
I've got part of it in my hands.
I haven't advertised yet, that's great, that's wonderful.
Is that your famous banana pudding?
We have barbecue, so we're having.
I am definitely going.
Blue Lacy, TM Smokehouse is catering the event. So it's going to be, I don't know, it'll be great. The speaker is going to be the executive director of the Aquifer. So he's going to come and talk about Aquifer-related issues, so it should be good. Usually they just launch business meetings, but we try to have an engage, a good meal and an engaging speaker. Anything else from the report that you have a question about?
There was another thing that I wanted to, one of the things we had missed that's coming up. There's the, this group that's doing a, what did they call that? They're doing a documentary on the migration over the last few hundred years of people from Europe.
There were millions of them or something like that.
There were millions of them, yeah.
I think it's called There Were Millions of Them. It's a French.
So they're actually coming to, well, it's, I think it was, it's a French, yeah, it's a French production. They're talking about the migration from Europe. And they're going to be filming in Casterville. They'll be filming some of our sites, some of our farms and talking about, they have like very specific areas. And we're one of like four or five areas.
In the entire United States?
In the entire United States.
Nice.
So it's kind of pretty cool.
Exciting, it's neat. Yeah, when are they coming?
They'll be here on Thursday.
Oh, it's this Thursday?
It's Thursday.
Wonderful.
Yeah, they have an agenda, they've been trying to get it out of them and figure out exactly what they were doing. And they have a plan and we will find out on Thursday.
What it is on Thursday, great. It's very French, okay.
You, going back, you mentioned that movie and Darren, Dave and I were able to go to that. There's going to be another showing next Monday, 7:00 at evening. It's very enjoyable, it really is. It's nice.
It is charming, oh my gosh.
It's enjoyable, it's well worth, it's only about an hour, but it's also neat just going to that DM, DM, in that theater again. And I would encourage everybody to get a copy to the Academy, it's like.
$5, right, the tickets? Five bucks for a year.
That's offsetting, that, that money is just offsetting the cost because there's still, it's still a, I mean, your rent, it costs $1,000 for a theater. So the $5, then you're getting to pay for the total run of the theater. So the five dollars doesn't even get to pay for the total rent of the theater, but, um, so that's being donated. But just, again, it's an extremely charming movie, yeah, it's very entertaining, just to hear some of these stories, these people talking, it's just great, so.
Can you give an update on the streets? That way it's, everybody knows what's going on?
So there are only a couple of streets, so the streets look like they're finished. One might think they're finished. Um, and I think the contractor thought they were finished in, in, in most places. We had just a couple finished up they were doing. But there, um, one of the things that the mayor's requested that, that I'm going to prepare for council, when this project is complete, I want KFA, um, now Lochner, to come and do a presentation about our streets design. So we have, we have morphed, right, as, as, um, I think it's hurt, you pointed out, the streets are wider, there's other changes that have been made. And it's not actually the streets wider, what, what we did was we established the shoulders to protect the paved portion. And the shoulders will look, to a certain extent, they're paved, because they're gonna be sealed, uh, to keep, to help also maintain them. The whole, the whole area will be sealed. But bottom line, streets are not completely finished. There are a number of, um, improvements that we want made, um, that mostly deal with ceiling, but in some cases also deal with the rock that was put down, and how it was put down, and, and the texture, if you will, of it. So they're gonna be working on that for the next couple of weeks. And I'll let you know when it's actually finished, when they've finished all that work. But again, I want Lochner to come and do a presentation to, one, talk about our street design, and two, kind of provide some graphics, images of what that looks like, and then, and actual pictures of kind of, here's what success looks like. This is what we want to try to do going forward, and explain the methodology, why are they recommending this? Why have we kind of evolved in, in what we're doing with our streets?
And I, I had a couple of people in my neighborhood ask this question this afternoon to me. Why on Geneva Street, they stopped at the intersection of Geneva and Washington before you get to the, go to the bridge? Well, there's that little stint from that stop sign intersection to the bridge that they didn't do anything to. But they started on the other side of the bridge and continued on to do, so people are wondering, why wasn't that part done? They skipped over it entirely.
You're asking me to answer that question right now?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if it was part of the original scope or not. I know that we talked about not doing a section of Geneva because River Bluff Electric was being done.
Yeah, oh, no, they did that part.
Yeah, so I don't know.
That, it's just that stretch from that stop sign to the bridge.
Where's that, where that one guy wanted his thing?
The German Shepherd, yeah, yeah.
That's because he wanted his support, so he said, you know what?
So that
I'm just kidding.
It's just people are looking at
No, I don't know, I don't know. I'll have to find out why that section wasn't done, if there was, it, it's possible that they're just, again, aren't finished, but, um, I'll have to find out. I know they're doing Geneva, you know, kind of, you can see it, they're doing a couple of blocks at a time, as they work their way down it, but. I don't know, I'll find out.
All right, thank you.
How we relate to the Geneva? I think your, your thing said that Geneva was finished except for, I think, I'll redo that, we, they're gonna face
My thing says that? The, the staff report does, or?
You're gonna have to redo Geneva. There's something
My staff? Did my staff report say that? What did you say? Because I have said that. The only streets they, the three streets that we've accepted, that we said, okay, these are okay, are all in the
Country Village?
Well, not Country Village, they're in that subdivision next to Country Village, whatever that's called.
Like, Breedon?
Breedon, the Breedon subdivision. And it's not all the roads are there. There's three of the roads are there, and I don't remember the names off the top of my head, that we accepted and said, okay, these are, these are the way we want, I like them.
They're Alvina, Breedon, and May.
Yeah. All the other streets, so that's only three very small sections. All the other streets are within that scope. We do not consider complete. We want them to do additional work on, and they're, they're still working.
Your thing says, what's going three street improvement, that all streets have been paved and chipped.
That's true.
Working with contractors and resolving fog seal problems.
That's also true.
But, but, that's, is these streets, we're just part of the 23 street program though?
Right, so
So you're still thinking, what you told us last week is
Geneva's got more work than probably fog seal.
Yeah.
Because the chip seal's down, but we're actually pulling up some of the rock, and they're, they're gonna do some other things there, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, I, the, the streets that are completed, before you mentioned, and most of Lafayette, those are really good.
Yeah, there's part of Lafayette that I think is okay, but again, I don't know how much, what extent, but we're gonna, we do have a good portion of it.
And the west side of it is chalky and rocky and not great.
Uh, that's, again, it goes back to how it was sealed.
Yeah, I think that we're all in agreement, including staff. I mean, the, the worst thing that we can do is not to not do anything, because that was done for a long time. I think the worst thing that we can do is to do things incorrectly, spend a lot of money on not getting it completely fixed. And to staff's credit, um, they have gone through and made sure, like, I looked at the ones that they said are actually complete, they're complete.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the best thing that we can do, is do something and make sure that it's quality. All right, anything else?
Uh, future meetings, I do, I think that's on an agenda, I'll make sure we schedule those.
Oh, and, uh, on the 11th of, of November, yeah, yeah, 11th of November, which is a Saturday, is when the American Legion is gonna do their Veterans Day ceremony at 11 o'clock at September Square.
Councilman Mers has something?
Um, I had asked a few questions in my email to Mr. Dixon about the Youngman Bridge Crossing. I don't think we need to go into a discussion on that now, just, I, I think that the city has three bridges across the Medina River. The one at 90, the one on Constantinople, and the one
We, we don't own the one on 90.
Well, that just means there's three bridges in Not that we own them, but they're three bridges.
I, I think that we should, if, if we've got them cracking, even if, like, a look at them says it's probably fine, I think we might want to work those into our 10-year
Well, so those bridges, just, you know, those, uh, Techsot actually, we don't, Techsot is inspect the one on Youngman's, that, that crossing. But Techsot does inspect the old Highway 90 bridge, the bridge at, um, on 90, and I think one other location. So that, that they, they do manually as part of their inspection, and that's on their maintenance. Separate from that is the one that goes into
The Medina River West?
It's Alice Creek or whatever, um, oh, no, I'm talking about the one that goes into River Bluff.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that's essentially a bridge, just cold bricks and stuff under it, and, you know, again, we're working with Lochner to address, that's a drainage issue that we need to resolve soon. But it's a finance issue.
Going down the river, into the backside, there's that bridge.
I think, I just think it might be a good idea to throw in the Seattle eventually. But this bridge will need to be replaced, just to keep it on
Youngman? I don't know. That's what, look, look at Phil. He, he looked at it, it's been there for a long time.
It's been there for over 100 years. Because, well, not, the, 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 uh, it, it's in great shape, it's on some of the, it ain't going nowhere.
The, the, the concrete could deteriorate eventually.
Yeah.
It's on their staff report.
It was mentioned on the street.
It's on staff report. Yes, thank you.
But it's okay.
All right. The Youngman Street, it's a specific item, I'm sorry.
What else?
All right, I did have an item under future meetings, is that a, also an agenda item?
Discussion on future agenda items.
All right, well, if you're ready, move that out.
Yes.
Okay. We need to schedule some workshops.
I agree.
Good night. Thank you.
I'll see you in the morning, 9:00 AM. Plan our next meetings, we haven't had a staff meeting in a while. Workshops.
Workshops.
Workshops. CIP and the utility. The mayor expressed a desire to get away from meeting during the week, um, and to try and meet on the weekends. So, one, I want to just throw that out there and see.
I could do evenings, um, I can flex a couple of hours. Uh, I just, I'd, I'd be hard pressed to do, like, day-long meetings.
Well, I think we're gonna need to scope out what all we're gonna try to accomplish in the utility meeting. That utility meeting, it's gonna serve a couple of purposes. One will be the utility, uh, policy update. Our, our policy's woefully out of date. There's a lot of things in it that we are not doing, like, how and when we bill late, and these types of things. There's also some, um, so this is a policy itself just needs fixing and overhauling. And, and staff has known that for a long time, almost since I, I think since I got here. Since we had the first planning meeting, it's been on the schedule to address utility policies. So that would be part of the scope of the, the meeting. And then the other scope would really deal with our, um, efforts around water rights and conservation, um, and drought contingencies. So, that, and those are three kind of separate issues. One is like, we, we've already had a presentation with Respec on the water rights and what we require. I think the, the, the outcome of that was, really, don't touch it, the amount that you require is the right amount, leave that alone, you're good. On the conservation side, I think there's a, a need to have some discussion, dialogue on the pol, on the policy side of, what do we do to encourage conservation? And what, what types of things can we do from a building standards, and so other things about conservation, and, and what role does the city play in that conservation effort, right? And then the third was drought contingency, that's related but different. And that is on, you know, again, car washes, and, you know, big users of water, and, you know, what are we doing during a drought, and is what we're doing appropriate, right? So those are kind of three separate topics that we would need to cover in this workshop. And that's my idea of a scope, but y'all may have other ideas. So then when you figure out, well, how long is that gonna take? How many hours are we gonna dedicate to those discussions? In my mind, it's a half day, but I don't know.
Well, y'all have already said October 5th and 12th, you can't come.
Well, I've already got dates, so I'm working, yeah.
We talked about some of it.
Yeah, well, and it's a challenge, because I'm at, the first week, Phil and I are at TML. Uh, the next week, I'm gonna go on vacation. The following, uh, week, I'm here, right, but that's the last
16 through the 20th?
What?
Well, if it's October, we have a council meeting on the 10th.
Yep.
And then the 16th through the 20th is a open week, and then the 24th is the next council meeting.
Yeah, the 16th through 20th is when I'm on my
When you're gone, okay, then the 23rd through the 27th, unless you go into November. Well, then you have the end of the year, end of the month, which is the 30th, through the 3rd. The 2nd is count, is court, so that this bill, this review will be available. You have that week.
But again, part of it's allocation of time, how long is it gonna take? And then we find a day that we can do it, right? And then we try to shoot to do it on one of those days. So that's one meeting, and then the other meeting is the CIP. Now, the CIP may not be super productive, and partly it's we are not, it, it's really about talking about future projects. But it's not a situation where, well, okay, we're going to issue some debt, and we need to figure out how to spend that money. We, these are projects we need to talk about again. What's your priorities? Then we do have several that we do want to talk about, I think. One is the library, if, if we end up doing something there. The other is the animal care facility, that's come up multiple times. She wasn't here tonight, but she would have been if she could, I'm sure, Ms. McVeigh, to remind us of that. So there's some conversations we need to have. But by and large, the CIP discussion, in my mind, isn't as big and lengthy, simply because there's not a big, there's not a funding source for most of it. So it's gonna be limited to, and maybe that makes the conversation longer, because it's gonna be limited to what you really care about, and, and how you want to spend the cash that you have on you. Also, we gotta schedule some dates.
Okay, so you need two dates?
I need two dates.
And what are your proposals?
Well, um, if it were just, that's one of the things, if we're just looking at Saturdays, then, um, there isn't a Saturday in October that would work.
Yeah, Saturdays aren't good.
Are we okay with doing maybe a 3:00?
Which Saturday, sorry?
Uh, 3:00 during the week, start, I can, like I said, I can do a couple hours.
Staff can do whatever y'all need to do. I
Yeah, during the week at 3, yeah.
Um, if we changed during the week, then, um, the week of the 9th after TML, that doesn't leave me a lot of time to prepare, but the week of the 9th, we could do one of those for the utility discussion or the CIP. And then the week of the 23rd. Um, now, the issue with both of those weeks is, you have a council meeting, you already have a council meeting on the 10th, you already have a council meeting on the 24th.
And the 12th is an EDC meeting, if they have.
Right. I think we still plan to have it. Don't know what we're gonna talk about. Actually, I do think there's a couple of future topics.
We could do the afternoon of the 12th?
Well, the 12th is EDC.
Okay.
So, but, so we could, we could go to EDC. And after EDC, those, but just to understand, you're giving up the, the noon to basically all day, you know, that whole afternoon.
Well, it's just, it's lunch on, on, uh, for the EDC.
Yeah, it's noon to 1, but we never finish at 1. We always finish at 1:30, and then this starts at 3. You have an hour and a half break, and then we go into whatever that meeting is.
How, how long are you talking about, if you're like that, that day, I can't
As you say, he's always saying
Well, it doesn't work.
One of them.
And now you go, how late in the evening are you gonna go, 5:00 to 1:00?
I probably leave it at that. Okay, all right. What was the other date? Range?
Well, the week of the 9th, you have the council on the 10th, the 12th was, was EDC, so we just ruled out the 12th. Uh, again, the 10th is ruled out. So you have the day, the Monday before, 11th, which is a Wednesday, and the 13th, which is Friday.
Friday works better, or Mondays and Fridays work best for me.
So you could look at the 13th.
It's a Friday.
Which is a Friday.
Were you good luck?
In the evening.
No.
How about the week of the 23rd?
The week of the 23rd works, that's what I'm saying, that's the other week, so, but we need to do two of these meetings. But we don't have to do them both in October, we do one in November, too. So the week of the 23rd works, the 24th is council meeting.
Do the 25th? We don't have any board meetings at night.
Mondays and Fridays work best, if it starts
Friday is out for Shuna, is that every Friday?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I can't do evenings.
Oh, evenings. So this is, so what time in the evening, like?
I mean, if, because Darren mentioned starting at 3.
Right.
And if we go, say, 4 hours till 7.
At 7, right.
That's the latest.
Right, that's what I'm saying. When I say evening, 3 to 7, 4 hours.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be, I honestly don't think it's gonna be longer than that. And if we do it in the evening, it probably, it actually will, it'll probably be shorter, I don't know.
It's just, yeah, Friday evenings, uh, I got other stuff I gotta take care of. You said the 23rd year available?
Monday.
Monday year available?
And that's, because David said Mondays and Fridays are better.
Would you rather do the 23rd?
I can do the 23rd.
So if we do the 23rd, that would be the utility meeting, and that's only because I'm gonna be getting off the ship on the 21st. So I'm not gonna be ready to do a CIP meeting on the 23rd, but I can, I could defer to John and his team and say, look, this is all you, 23rd, be prepared, have a, have a meeting, so.
Okay. Kathy's a woman, it was kind of
Yeah, 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 I know. So the 23rd would be the utility meeting, and then, um, the next meeting we need to have is the CIP. And, um, again, you tell me, we have the week of, um, the rest of the week of the 23rd. We have the following week of the 30th, of November.
When do we do the 30th?
And then we have the week of the 6th. Yeah, you don't have your council meeting until the 14th.
Which I won't be at, because I'm having surgery on the 13th.
Okay.
Um, and I have pre-op throughout the week on the, of the 6th, with the clinic and then the hospital, so.
How about the 30th?
Yeah, 30th works.
In November?
Uh, October.
No, October.
October.
It's a Monday?
Monday.
I'm clear.
Start at 3?
So we'll have two, one week back-to-back on Mondays. The 23rd will be the utility discussion, and the 30th will be the CIP discussion.
That works.
That work?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
You're just trying to get in that new budget, you're, you're
All right, anything else? Is there anything else that we haven't covered on the, uh, the pending agenda list? Anything that we need to make sure we keep up?
Please, updated, I know, Phil, you had something you wanted to talk about that wasn't on this agenda.
I just
And I don't know if it's on the H, HSL team or something, but
Yeah, I'll discuss it.
Record right now. Oh, okay. So is that the item we talked about at 5?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, Councilman Mers wanted to put something on about
Trade diversity?
Yes.
I, I'd like to work on it more before I bring it.
Okay. Just put it on there as kind of a placeholder, uh, so far, and that way we just keep an eye out for it.